I guess it's so that started recording automatically to answer your question.
Let's open it, make that large and we can always pause the recording while we're not started. And I think there's a little, there's a little.
Oh, you got it.
There. So we're, we're live. Thank you, Richard. It's a few minutes after six, 6:03. Let's bring the meeting to order. Welcome to the Playboard meeting. Steve, thanks for joining us again. Appreciate that. And everybody have a packet? Yes, perfect. On the agenda. And we'll let another person in. You almost got, you keep on working on it. And just one second. So bring your cursor down to to the line or equivalent to where it says Randall. So go up a little bit. Going up, keep going up right there and then admit. I know it's hard to see. And if, just a second to do for it to occur. So, okay. Thanks, Richard. And if you have trouble, you want me to admit, I can do it from here too, because I can probably see better than you can. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, yeah. So.
I was tearing all day, but at a computer screen and like winded.
I hear you.
Okay, already. I will do that.
Thank you, Peter.
You're very welcome. And so on our, on our agenda, the old business to deal with first is the discussion and consideration of commercial development review ordinance amendments addressing commercial solar facilities. So that's our first order of business. So we'll tackle that. I think we had gone through a spot and I think the notes as, as it were marked up or the draft as it was marked up showed where we left off, which was.
Yes, Mr. Duwan is here to talk to us from the landscape architecture.
Oh, he is here? Okay. Fantastic. Hi, Mr. Duwan. So maybe we should just hear from Terry first.
Yeah.
Is that okay? But everybody would just hear from the landscape architect first. So Mr. Duwan, the floor is yours. If you'd like to give us some advice.
Thank you. I do have a presentation, although I don't know if you're able to see it. Do you have, do you all have a screen that you could, I could project onto?
If you do share your, your presentation, we have two larger monitors in here.
See, I was hoping that was the case. Okay. But first, the host is going to have to disable participant screen sharing.
Okay, stand by. I wonder if I can do that. Let's see. Yeah. One participant can share at a time. Yeah. Multiple, yeah. Well, let's try multiple participants can share simultaneously. So if I try that, does that allow you to do what you need?
That looks like it's, it's gonna work. Okay.
Thanks, Craig.
Hold on for one minute. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see it in a pre, pre present. Now we go, yep, in presentation.
And Steve Thompson, another landscape architect from my office, our office is here. And before I jump into this, I would guess I'd like to hear from all of you. What sort of things would you like to hear from us? Our offices had a lot of experience in dealing with the review of solar projects as well as a variety of other types of projects involving visual impact assessments such as cell towers and wind energy projects. We've also had some experience in helping towns draft ordinances. In my town of New Gloucester, I helped our town planner do that. We also have had a fair amount of experience in dealing with DEP and local permitting and also in doing mitigation planning. And we'll, I'll talk on all those things as I go through. But before that, if there's any specific points that you want us to address as we go through here, now would be the time to, to bring those up. So we can emphasize that.
Right. Thank you. I know there was one on my mind and I think I've seen some other comments from other people, but rather than speaking for everybody, let me just ask, is there any one particular thing that anybody wants to see, Rich?
I, Rich Baker here. I understand that there's really no particular national standard or whatever regarding these visual assessments. In the end, I'd kind of like to understand Alan, what you, you, we would put in there to ensure that the person knows what we're doing and we have something to base our decision on.
Okay. So Terry, did you hear all that?
Yes. And in fact, I think that Anthony Wilson had, had form, had given me that question for Mr. Baker and I responded to that. I don't know if, if he had a chance to share my response or not.
Maybe.
I'll, I'll try and address that as I go through here.
Okay. So and before we go any further, are there any other questions we want to make sure to ask Terry right now so you could have them?
Well, I have a question.
This is now the time to do it.
Yeah, my name is Peter Sargent and I'm the planning board here for a while. And we have an application coming forward and it's going to be on, on, on the solar farm, solar farm will be over looking the lake. So if you're down in the lake, you have to see it. So have you run across those type of solar farm situations?
I will show you. Yes. Yeah. Steve, Steve told me this afternoon, he's done about 30 of these so far. And I think we've encountered just about every conceivable situation in Maine and New Hampshire that you can imagine.
Okay. I was wondering, thanks, Pete. George?
George Seal. My question really is just an elaboration or follow up to Richard, Rick Fakers. And, you know, given that there's no national widely accepted methodology or standard procedure or best management practice. I believe in your email, you suggested as an alternative, possibly referencing DEP's regulation that, that I guess you drafted as a contractor to them or helped draft as a contractor to them.
That's correct.
As a possible alternative. I guess, you know, I think the goal is to ensure that we get quality visual assessments and they're done consistent with, you know, best accepted practices, I guess, so that, so that we don't get, you know, an outlier that's nothing but junk. The because at the end of the day, you know, we have to make a binary decision. And this is, this is not, this is a little different than stormwater runoff or poters runoff or engineer, engineering, you know, this is a lot squishier. So any, any insights you have that can help us pick something that's squishy and make it a little bit more objective would be helpful.
Oh, squishy is our middle name. Yes.
Great. So we have some good questions there and hopefully some good food for thought, Terry, as you go through your presentation. And before we go any further, Craig, anything else? No? Sarah, anything else? Terry, the floor is yours.
Oh, well, it's not really a floor. It's the screen is ours.
The, the screen. Yeah.
The electronics.
I know. I know. So, so I put together more than a few slides. Steve gave me a bunch of slides on solar projects, but I wanted to give you a little bit more insight as to how we go about doing visual impact assessment. This gets to the heart of some of the really excellent questions that were just raised. And I appreciate those because that says to me that the people on the board here have done a lot of thinking about what it means, what is, what's the base level of review that should be required? How do you determine whether or not this is a, a quality product or not? And how do you ultimately protect the town from unwarranted visual effects? Since you don't know us, TJ DNA is my initials, Terrence J. Duwan. We are a landscape architecture firm in Yarmouth, Maine. We do a wide variety of different types of things, which is what makes us all fired up in the morning from urban design in downtown Portland to a lot of pathway development in the Yarmouth, for example, where our offices, we've done a lot of work all over the state, you know, the State House Commons, for example. And new neighborhood designs. Several years ago, actually more than several years ago, we got involved in a process that we call visualizations. This particular example is one that we did for the main department transportation when they are trying to do a bypass around Wisconsin. You may remember that. Well, that was before, and this is what we prepared for them to show people what it would look like. And that is really the key to a good visual impact assessment to make sure that you as planning board members that the neighbors and anybody else that's reviewing a project like this that involves physical change understands what changes are anticipated and what the effect might be. So this particularly one, for example, you can see there's, you know, quite an effect and it's going to have a significant effect for the people that live around us, especially that house right in the middle there.
Yeah.
This is a okay. This is another example of visualization. This is much more site specific. And this is a wonderful project that we're working on now up in Rockport where the neighbors felt that this, the, the library, which we had, which was just completed, ended up looking like this. And so our job is to make it look like this. And this is a good example of the sort of things that you can do when you see what the problem might be and then propose solutions that people can then evaluate and make judgments on and ultimately be brought into the, the court of the planning board to make sure that this is what the town is looking for. And perhaps more importantly, this is what the town is not looking for. We also have, we also do a lot of design guidelines, working with communities and Salem, New Hampshire, for example, and we've done probably a dozen of these that help people understand, you know, how do you transform a strip development, for example, like this? There's something which is a lot more appropriate or more, more convincing for people to, that want to walk along Route 302. And is this the best place to put a building? Or should it be closer to the street? These are all done through the, the magic of photos, Photoshop and digital manipulation that Steve is really an expert on. Several years ago, back in the early 1980s, actually, some of you may recall the big A project, the Great Northern Paper had proposed just on the southwest corner of Baxter State Park. They wanted to put a big hydroelectric project up there. And that was our first foray into evaluating major landscape level changes. Since then, we've done a lot of work for a variety of different types of clients. In the process, we also developed a specialty in doing scenic inventories for communities and for the state planning office for much of the coast of Maine. Now, that was a question that I asked when, when I had several correspondents with Anthony. What does Belgrade have right now in terms of a, an inventory of their scenic resources? I know that when I've looked at your, your draft ordinance, you talked about, it is the term scenic resource, but what does it mean? And so I'll, I'll touch a little bit about that later on. But it's a process that, you know, we've developed some methodology for this lower right hand corner is an illustration that we did for the state planning office, which is available online, scenic assessment handbook, which explains to people in communities how they might go about doing an assessment that can then be incorporated into a comprehensive plan or used as a standalone document. We found in dealing for some of our major clients, like Central Maine Power Company, one of the first things we always ask of towns is what, what scenic resources are of value to your community? And as we think about doing things like solar farms or transmission lines or substations or wind projects, those are the things we have to, to look at, to evaluate and to map as part of our view shed mapping to see what the effect may be on scenic resources. We've then have used that same methodology for a number of communities. For example, in Lincolnville on the coast, we did a scenic assessment again to help them understand what is valuable about their community and where the, where the problems might be in the future. So this is a, the next couple of slides are actually from chapter 315. And that was the, the document that was referenced earlier. This is the, the document from DEP that talks about assessing and mitigating potential effects on scenic resources. Now, this is the state standard. Public scenic resources are public natural resources or public lands visited by the general public in part for the use, observation, enjoyment and appreciation of natural or cultural visual qualities. There's a lot of key words in here. It's public. It's either or public lands. They're visited by the general public for the use, observation, enjoyment and appreciation. To us, when we do scenic, scenic impact assessments, visual impact assessments, we, we are very careful to make sure that what we do when we do our evaluation are, follow these guidelines here. Now, many people will say, well, it's going to destroy the view from my house or from the view from my living room. Well, again, the state standards talks about scenic resources being places that are publicly accessible. Now, many of the wind power projects and the solar projects that we deal with, like most of them go to DEP. So these are the standards that would apply to them. I know that when you've developed, you're starting to develop your own standards, however, you may want to tighten it up. You may want to have some language in there that talks about effects on neighbors or the effects on neighborhoods or places that might not ordinarily be considered a scenic resource by this definition. But I put this out here just to say there are resources available that can help you guide, help you go through the process. So we like to think of scenic resources either being points, lines or areas. Now, a point is a viewpoint, the top of a mountain, for example. Or this is the, the top of the, the bridge on the Penobscot River near Bucksport. Lines can be things like beaches or the edge of a lake or scenic byways or boardwalks or rivers that people travel along, that they appreciate the, the natural or the scenic beauty of them. And these are all things that, that can and should typically be at inventoried as part of a scenic resource. Most of the things that we deal with are scenic areas and we like to think of these as being outdoor rooms, that, that places that have well-defined features that have floors. In this case, you know, the water body that has an overhead plane, which may be trees or maybe the sky. And it has walls. In this case, there may be hills or masses of trees, but they're recognizable areas that can be mapped. And then as projects are brought before a community, they can be used as a baseline for evaluating potential scenic impacts. Now, the state in chapter 315 has a number of criteria that, that guide the, the identification of scenic resources. And I think there's five or six of them, a national natural landmark. I don't think there are any in your town. There's only 14 in the, in the whole state. And these are some examples of the ones that are primarily of scientific interest. National wildlife refuges. I, again, I don't think there's any in Belgrade that qualifies a state or national wildlife refuge. I, I could be wrong. I, I don't know your town that well. State or federally designated trails, such as the Appalachian Trail, the East Coast Greenway. You know, are there facilities like that that people go to, to enjoy the, the character of the area? Now, I'm sure there's probably many places like this. Their properties are listed on or eligible for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places. And these are, these are identifiable. There, there's a lot of information on each of those. And when the, the subject of potential effect comes up, there are sources to go to, to recognize where they are and why they are put on the National Register. National parks, I know there's none nearby or state parks. But the, the catchall one, this is the one that probably deserves the most type, most level of discussion. And this is the, the other category, public natural resources or public lands visited by the general public in part for the use, observation, enjoyment and appreciation of natural or cultural visual qualities. Now, I think, when I think of, of your town, I think of the wonderful lakes that are out there. And, you know, the, the scenic roads that, that people drive for, just for the pleasure of driving or as well as just getting from one point to another. And so when you think about doing scenic resources and looking at a, a, a visual impact assessment that may come before you for any particular project, these are the sort of things that I think that need to be incorporated into that, that study. Going beyond that, if this was a wind power project, there is additional language then that gets inserted into this definition that talks about great ponds that have been rated as outstanding or significant under a series of documents that were done back in the 1980s. And when these studies were done, this is the main lake study and the main wildland lakes assessment. The people that did this study was part of the group farmed by the, the state in conjunction with the National Park Service. They looked at things like the features of the water body, the configuration, the amount of inharmonious development that was out there. And they came up with ratings to determine whether or not these were considered outstanding or significant scenic resources. Now, you've got quite a few resources in town. Belgrade has what? Nine or seven or eight different lakes that are on the, the study, the mainland, main lakes assessment. Now, if you go across the top, you'll see the various categories that they use to evaluate the various physical and scientific and scenic features. Under scenic, go down here. None of the lakes in Belgrade have been laid, has been rated as scenic or significant rather or outstanding. I personally don't necessarily agree with that, but this is a, a document that's used as a point of reference when people do scenic impact studies. Now, you as a community may disagree with this. That's perfectly legitimate. And you may say that Mesolonski Lake, for example, at 3,510 acres is one of our most critical scenic resources. And therefore it deserves a level of, of protection that may not be warranted under the, the state's criteria. Okay. So what is a visual impact assessment? As I said, we've done a lot of work in transmission corridors. This is the work that we did for the New England Clean Energy Connect. Part of the work that we do are photo simulations, taking an existing photograph, showing what the initial proposal would look like and then identifying potential problems. Now, this of course is from the top of a significant snowmobile route and people are very concerned that this stripe through the middle of the, the, the woodland here would drive people away. And so part of the things that we did was to say, well, maybe we could do a different type of cutting pattern that would look like this. And so we talked about the whole idea of tapered vegetation, what it might look like over time. I use this as an example because almost any project that you can, that you can think of is going to have some level of mitigation. Once you identify where a scenic problem might lie, well, then you have to get to the question, what is it that causes the problem? And how can you mitigate it? How can you reduce it? Telecommunications, we've actually done some of these projects in Rome, I believe. And this is a project outside of Rangeley we did recently. I know one of the questions that was raised and we talked about this early on with Anthony is, you know, what do we mean by a view shed study? Well, if you look at the top of this tower right here, this is a photo simulation. The tower, think of that as having a very, very infinitely bright light on it. And so the next diagram here, the purple areas show where that light might be visible from. Here's the tower location right here. If that light was turned on and he places a purple patch on this map, this is the topographic map. Shows where this light might be visible within an eight mile area. The APE is area of potential effect. And that's a term that DEP likes to use when they think about these sort of projects. You know, how far away do you have to be before there is no effect? This particular project, DEP asked us, because of the light and the fact that we're on Rangeley Lake, you know, what's it going to look like, you know, from Rangeley Lake State Park? Now, what's it going to look like from the Appalachian Trail and the bottom portion, portion of this diagram right here? Well, we do these diagrams typically for any type of projects. You'll see some in a moment that shows what it looks like for a, for a solar project. These particular projects with cell towers are a little bit unique because there's a single point with, with the solar projects, you're dealing more with a larger area. And so the, the, the technology involved is a little bit different, but the, the basic principle is the same. It answers the question, where might you see the upper portion of a project from any place within a certain distance? Now, that raises the question, how far out should one have to go when you do a project like this for a solar, any energy facility? So this happens to be, you know, this, this may be a typical facility. This, this is language, by the way, which I'm sure you recognize. It's from your, your ordinance. I just dropped this in. Any facility should not have any detrimental effect on the scenic resources of town or degrade the scenic value from a butter's properties. In order to determine the visual impact, the planning board will use the information provided in the VIA study, consider the following. The significance of the potentially affected scenic resource, existing character of the surrounding areas, the expectation of the typical viewer, the project purpose and the context of the, of the activity and the extent, nature and duration of the potential effect. And the, the presence of the public's continued use and enjoyment. Now, these are all wonderful phrases. And this is, these, these pretty much parallel a lot of the language that's, that's in some of the, the work that, that the, the DEP has specifically the Wind Energy Act. For example, the significance of scenic resources. Donnell Pond up near, near Ellsworth is an example of a lake that was rated as outstanding. And so when we talk about the significance of the scenic resource, we, we have to look to, we, we as a, as a reviewer, look towards documents that have been prepared either by the state or by other groups that say this is significant or this is really important for the following reasons. You just can't say, because I like it, because people say it's scenic. That has to be based upon, you know, some, some rational way of evaluating the, the, the scenic value of places like Donnell Pond. And, you know, we could talk here about the configuration or the irregularity of the shoreline, the fact that it's got points of interest with islands and peninsulas in here, the fact that it's, has virtually no inharmonious development around the shoreline. This to me is an example of a highly outstanding scenic resource. Again, as part of a good VIA that would be submitted to the town. The question is, what's the existing character of the, the site itself and the surrounding area that may be affected by it? And so we typically do a, you know, a lot of work to drive around it, to get on kayaks and, and paddle the lakes and the rivers to, to photograph it from any number of different angles to make sure that we understand where people are viewing the, the landscape right now. What effect is, does this have in, in the lifeblood of the community? How are, are, are scenic resources such as old churches or views? How, how might they be affected? How far away would the project be? Is it going to be visible at all? So it's important not to do just a, a desktop analysis. It's really important to get out there and to understand what the character of the landscape is like. Then you have this question that is in, in your language, what's the expectation of the typical viewer? And what's the extent, nature and duration of the public use? And then now the, the bottom line is what effect is this project or any project going to have on the continued use and enjoyment of that particular scenic resource? Now, we could go on and on for a long time talking about these. But I'll just to sort of summarize, expectation of the typical viewer is kind of a tricky one. For most of the wind powered projects that we do in Maine, we do intercept surveys. We go to places where either our people are enjoying the landscape, either at boat launches or out on the lake or from scenic overlooks. And we ask them, you know, how do you like the view right now? And there's a whole series of questions. It takes about, you know, 10 minutes or so to go through one of these surveys. And then we show them a photo simulation to say, this is what the view may look like in the future. How might this then affect your desire to come back here? Or how might it design, how might it affect your view in terms of the quality of this, of this particular viewpoint? I don't think we I don't think we've ever done one. Have we, Steve, an intercept survey for a solar project?
No, we we haven't to this point. But if it was controversial enough, we certainly would.
Yeah.
Consider it.
Yeah, and they they do tend to be controversial, as we know. So many of you, this is, now we're getting to some actual work that we've done for solar projects. This is the view shed analysis. A view shed analysis is a computerized study looking at all the scenic resources and all these land use within a particular area. And this is going out three miles, and this is the the project right here. And I was not involved in this. This is up in Lewiston. And so one of the things that we do is then locate all the peas. These are all the photographs that we took that we took just to show the the planning board or whoever's reviewing this. What we found out about the visual physical character of an area. We also do photo simulations, which are usually identified on the plan like this.
But this this project shows the, if you look at those radii around the central project, there is no standard. Somebody was asking at the beginning about, you know, standards for this type of stuff. You know, there there is a lot of things we can pull from the state and and, you know, methodologies and things like that, but there there hasn't really been a standard study area distance for solar and one that one series of distances that we use, the DAP's, DEP is accepted, is a three mile study area for all scenic resources. So we're talking historic resources and trails and public parks. Elevated viewpoints, and then between three and five miles, all the way out to five miles. We typically only look at elevated viewpoints. So that's that's generally the that APE or area of potential effect that we work in with solar projects. So it's everything within three miles, between three and five elevated viewpoints only.
So this this gray area through here is the area where the solar facility is proposed. Anything that's in purple indicates where somebody might be able to see at least a portion of the solar facility. This doesn't mean you're gonna see the entire, you know, many acres. I mean, there's just at least one point within this area. So what this shows, at least from my way of looking at, there the the visual impact is pretty much contained to within maybe half a mile or so, which is fairly typical because most of the the projects that we've worked on, not all of them, but most of them are on fairly leveled ground that don't have a lot of visibility outside. And so when we think about a three mile area, as you can see through here, there's virtually no effect that this is going to have, with the exception of these areas right around here.
And remember, with a with a view shed map, as you know, as you as a town, you may receive applicants, they may provide a view shed map. Typically, all the view shed map is going to show is where potentially is any degree of that project visible. That could be one panel, that could be one associated transmission pole, or it could be, you know, a quarter of the project. Generally, you're just going to see areas where there's any potential for visibility. Now, there are ways with the software to sort of break that out. But as we'll get into further on here, it's taking it to the next level is gonna with the visualizations is what is really going to illustrate the magnitude of visibility to people and really help you as a town and a community decide, you know, how great these impacts are. In addition to, you know, a professional's report.
One of the questions that's always raised when you do these view set analyses, should you do with the leaf off conditions that you might see during the winter time? Or should we do with leave on conditions?
And to add to that, typically when view shed maps are created nowadays, they're they're created using LiDAR point cloud data, which is something you probably have heard of. It's it's used to create a lot of topography. Now you can use it to create vegetation. So you can actually have vegetation models that's used to run this calculation that ultimately generates this map that is accurate down to individual tree clusters. But the 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 information is not accurate enough to represent a leaf off condition. So you, a view shed map is not necessarily going to tell you where you can see through trees in the winter to see a particular object. View shed analysis created with LiDAR point cloud data, which is generally what is being used. It's kind of the industry standard dataset that goes into these is more accurate to a leaf on scenario, which is why other forms of analysis are important.
Okay. This is a project that we're working on right now. I don't know what the status of this is, Steve. Maybe you could.
This is one that that receives some pushback from a town. You know, a lot of it had to do with the way, you know, the visual impact. I mean, sometimes these projects are, you know, governed by wetland issues or runoff. Visual impact was a strong influence in this particular town.
How many people came out to the town meeting that you had?
This drew a large cloud, and this was a planning meeting, planning board meeting that had over a hundred thirty people show up to it. So this was a big deal. But when we do these types of analyses and generally when whoever's hired to do this analysis is, you know, approaching it from an unbiased perspective, from a highly technologically accurate perspective. And their goal is ultimately to represent the project and to assess the visual impact based on whatever regulations there are available to to sort of govern that study.
So this is what this is, this is the panoramic view. I should also mention that when we do these visual visualizations, we do both a panoramic view as well as what we call a normal view, which is a much more focused view of the particular resource. This is what it looks like now. This is the White Mountains in the background. And this is what it would look like in the future. Obviously, you know, they're taking out a lot of woodland there, which was a lot of concern to the people. This is the the normal view, and this is what you would get if you were to take one photograph from a thirty five millimeter camera. This is what it looks like now. You can start to see individual trees.
And the purpose of the purpose of creating those, what we call normal views, is they, when we create them and ideally when a consultant creates these, they're they're formatted in a certain way that when you hold that image, you can bring that image out into the field to this very location. You can hold that image out at a certain distance. And and because it's captured with the correct camera lens and it's it's formatted at the right size, it will lock into your field of view. So you can, you know, you can move it up and move it down and and see that visual impact, you know, from that point in the field. And these are very useful with regulators. We've gone out in the field with DEP with planning boards, with the butters, with any stakeholder concerned or interested in the visual impact of any particular project.
Now, it's it's important to keep in mind that what you're looking at, Ryan, these are visualizations or photo simulations. These are not the visual impact assessment. The V I A is an evaluation of the effect it may have on the landscape. And when we start to think about, you know, what effect it may have, we tend to look at things like the form, the line, the color, the texture, the dominance. And so you have to ask questions. Well, is the form of what is being inserted here characteristics of the landscape that people are familiar with? You know, that's the form of things like cell towers or wind turbines or even large solar panels are generally not typically found in rural communities. And so, you know, that that raises almost an inherent problem for some of these large utility infrastructures. Lines, you know, ask the question, you know, where's the transmission line gonna run? Is that gonna create a new obvious line in the landscape? What about the the separation between the the solar panels and the woodland? That creates another lines, very artificial looking. What about the color? Is there anything that could be done to minimize the the dark black color of the solar panels? What about the texture? This is a very flat, at least this particular illustration makes it look very flat up against a very textural background. And then dominance, you know, is this the thing that draws your eye? Or is it the mountains that still are the dominant element here? Well, there are ways to evaluate this. There are there are matrices that have been adopted. They're used to help to quantify some of these these effects. But the the basic of the visual impact assessments evaluates a project and then gives reviewers like yourselves a set of criteria to use, but ultimately you're the ones that are going to have to make the final decision. Does this meet a minimum standard for for minimizing visual impact? Now, what do you do about it then? Now, here's here's a very typical project area. And I know this is one of Steve's projects. And so again, as as going as part of the work that we do, we photograph during different times of year. I don't know when this is probably in July. The vegetation. And this is what it would look like, you know, we in our computer, we're able to generate models of what a project will look like. And so this is what we brought to the to the town and say, this is the effect it's gonna have.
This particular project was taken from a road that that town had designated as a scenic road. This wasn't a state rating, but this was, the town had taken, you know, in its comprehensive plan, identified scenic areas. And it's this open expanse, the project was proposed to be here. If you go to the next slide, one of the ways we suggested to work with the town to create mitigation was to create plantings right up against the road. Well, one of the things people love about driving this road is that it feels so open. So the town said, well, we don't want plantings up against the road, but we we want, we don't want to see the project. So one of the first things we did is we pushed the project back. And if you go, if you go back a slide and you can see that the project has moved back further in the field. And then we brought the the plant, the screening up against the project. So what this allowed was to maintain that open field to screen the project and essentially create what just looks like the back, the back, a back hedge row screening the project.
And not all projects have this degree of flexibility. Would you, would you think that's a fair statement?
Yep, that's that was fair. But this just goes to show you the importance of representing these things visually so people can understand them. So, you know, you really have to put it at that that visual scale to understand the 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 effect that these little changes can make.
Yeah, and I think the important thing here there is that this is a designated scenic byway or scenic road within this community, which meant that the town put a great deal of emphasis on preserving the open nature of it. They're recognized that there are things that may happen here in the future, but there are also ways to deal with some of the more negative effects such as solar projects. I think the average person driving by now is, may be aware of it, may not. You know, that may depend upon the 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 position of the sun and whether or not there's light that gets reflected off the solar panels or not. Or there may be other considerations. But I think this is a good example of what could, that can be done in terms of very creative mitigation measures. Steve, why don't you tell us? This is a big project here.
This one here, oh, yeah, this was in Gorham. And this was just another example of of some targeted planting mitigation that may be something that is, you know, that the town, that that town regulars can think about as a requirement. Based on, you know, certain criteria of visibility. So, yeah, you can see this little green areas Terry's pointing out were the areas of buffer. I believe the next page will show what a typical buffer will look like.
Yeah. And so I think as part of the discussion, when a applicant comes before the community, they should recognize, yeah, it's gonna be highly visible from a few places. Now, that the visibility may not be important, or it may be really critically important, like the last photograph. And so, you know, in this particular case, you know, the applicant says, well, you know, we identified, you know, this this corner down here as being very sensitive. And so we then developed a planting plan that showed how a mixture of evergreen deciduous trees and shrubs could be established to to screen out the the views of the solar panels from that particular viewpoint.
And, you know, here's an example of, you know, making this type of effort for and a butter or a series of a butter. So, you know, as Terry said at the beginning, a lot of these bigger scale projects we do focus on public resources, but at the town's discretion, they may require analysis of and and potential mitigation for abutting private properties.
Now, that that raises a whole another set of issues. You know, the developer may love putting this right here because, you know, it solves a problem. But, you know, as Steve said earlier, maybe people don't like to see, you know, hedges. Or they they like the fact that there's a large expanse of openness here. Or maybe the people, you know, want to see a particular type of vegetation. Maybe they're very interested in bird habitat. The point is that, you know, doing mitigation involves more than just a dialogue between the planning board and the applicant. It really should involve anybody that may be affected by a project such as this. I think that was the last slide. Yes. So that in a nutshell is some of our, the work that we've done, some of our experience. And with that, I guess I go back and see if there's anything that we missed on some of the the questions. So I'm gonna raise a question, and I don't want to put Steve on the spot or not, but the question always comes up, well, how much does it cost to do a visual impact assessment? Is that gonna put an unfair burden on an applicant?
I don't think so. And, you know, the, you know, a lot of times, you know, there's so much that go into these projects, whether it's a solar farm or it's a cell tower or a wind farm or whatever. So, you know, there's wildlife studies and lots of engineering, but the average person who sees something like this coming into their community, probably the first question on their mind is, what's it gonna look like? And and how's that gonna impact me? And a visual impact assessment answers that question. And, you know, we we work for towns, we work for developers. If they put a value on that, because I think communities put a value on that, then then, you know, a visual impact assessment is worth whatever the cost may be for that particular project.
It's it's part of the cost of doing business, I'm gonna comes down to. Yeah, they're they're not inexpensive to do it right. And that raises, somebody asked the question, how do we make sure that what you get as a as a product is gonna be meeting professional standards? I guess the first question that I would ask, who's gonna be doing it? Does this individual or the firm have experience in doing visual impact assessment? You know, we we've been doing it now since the the mid nineteen eighties. We are one of the three firms at the DEP and Land Use Planning Commission has recognized as peer reviewers for the state of Maine. You know, we we've done probably a hundred different projects involving visual impact assessment. I have seen work done by other individuals that are very emotional based and certainly don't get to the core values that we've talked about in this, looking at the effects that projects may have on form, line, color, texture, dominance and so forth. There there is a lot of material, and I I gave Anthony some information. I'd be more than willing to give you any, a lot of additional information on preparing visual impact assessments. Chapter three fifteen does outline in fairly good detail what's expected under a good V I A. But there's a lot of other handbooks and material that's out there that we can certainly share.
Terry, thank you, and Steve, thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate it. It was good to hear the types of things that you involve or include in the V I A. Give, I think it gives us some food for thought.
Question.
Yeah, we have some questions. Go ahead, Craig.
I hope so.
Okay, so when you do your impact study, is it different levels? Do you write it like three, five, ten? Or or is it just that you can just play an old flat that you can see it from here?
Well, that that's an excellent question, you know, when, and we we always talk about this, what we call hypothetical visibility. This comes up in wind power projects. You know, when the when the computer says you can see it, what the computer is telling you that you're gonna see the very top of a blade of a turbine at a distance of eight miles. Well, if the rest of the turbine is hidden by vegetation, it's not gonna have any effect at all. In fact, they, because of the thinness of the blade, you're probably not gonna see it unless you have binoculars. So you have to have to use the 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 computer generated mapping with a with some skepticism.
It's just one of the many tools that you use, you know, and Terry talked about. Well, of course, you know, we've shown you mapping, we've shown you visualizations. But then there's also this report piece where you you analyze it and maybe even try to quantify it in some sort of metric chart like Terry mentioned.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We 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 tend not to use ratings. We, we, we tend not to use ratings to any great extent, although it is possible to do that.
So. Now, the state doesn't have us ranked on our lakes for significant views. Are we able to upgrade on that? In the town? And even if the state doesn't have us rated that viable?
Well. Yeah, as, as I said to Anthony, I would strongly suggest that the town, as part of your comprehensive planning process. Do a, an inventory of what you consider to be your primary scenic resources. Again, the, the, the points, the lines, the areas, you know, are there specific viewpoints in the town that you consider to be really critical? Are there scenic roads or scenic rivers or scenic hiking trails that should be identified? Are there large areas that you, that you feel really represent the best that your town has to offer? And then what are the extents of those that you consider to be scenic?
Again, I would just, just because the state didn't necessarily rank it in a certain way. We hold the same weight on what a town has ranked its own scenic resources. So it's, it's, and I, I saw in the, in the draft. Document that Anthony sent around that it seems like you're starting to list some of those water bodies and places. I, I remember coming across that, that's still very important. Because, you know, it's a state process for some size projects, but it's also a local process for all projects. So, you know, it's, it's up to the town to, to, or, or potentially a consultant to help the town. Identify what they believe are, are the, you know, the scenic resources in their community.
All right, my other question, George can answer later, I won't tell you what. Do we have any designated in our comprehensive plan?
No. But we do have some general goals and recommendations about the importance of net, you know, the natural views. To the town and that they should be protected, but it doesn't, there was no inventory done. You know, where are those viewpoints are? But. My personal opinion is that the concrete plan will give us enough authority, I, I look the baseline. That we need to stand up to legal scrutiny if we, you know, identify some in the ordinance.
We, we, we've always take the position that the more specific you have, the, the stronger your, your case will be if you deal with. You know, large scale infrastructure projects, for example. That it's, it's not enough just to say, oh, you know, Johnson's Field is, is one of our most, you know, our most significant scenic resources. You know, it needs to be a lot more, a lot better defined in turn, in terms of, you know, what makes it significant. There is there historic aspects of it, are there visual and land use aspects of it? You, you may want to take a look at the work that we did in Lincolnville to give you an example of this sort of study that other committees have, have taken.
Thank you. Pete, did you have a question?
Uh, not, not specifically, okay, I just want to make sure.
And your question is, George, anything or?
I'm good, I just want to say thank you for the presentation, it was outstanding.
Yeah, so, so no specific questions here? George?
Yeah, thank you as well from me, that was really helpful. The. In addition to the work that you've done in your own hometown in New Gloucester. Are there other communities that you know of that either you have done or you know, some of your professional colleagues have developed. Similar kinds of requirements in their site review ordinances or their solar farm ordinances. Or commercial development type review ordinances. We didn't do an exhaustive look at all the towns. In Maine, of course, just given the number, but we did look at. What were, with towns that are similar to Belgrade, I E. Have a heavy tourism economy, are a lake community and, or. Well, basically those criteria to see what they had for solar farm ordinances and not a single one that we identified dealt with visual impact. At all. Screening requirements.
Right, yeah, Bar Harbor has a new one that I believe they adopted in last fall. You know, it's not exactly the same type of town, but it is, you know, tourist driven. What I have found in doing a lot of these assessments, it's, it's just that most towns do not have an ordinance that includes any sort of visual impact assessment. In fact, a lot of the times where our visual work gets pulled in is as part of the Natural Resource Protection Act, which Terry mentioned earlier. When the project triggers that, that triggers a, a visual work. But there's a lot of projects getting built that are, you know, doing minimal to no visual impact assessment. Because the towns don't have, you know, an ordinance or in place or, or any guidance. And, you know, people like us might not even be on these teams or people like us might not even. Help represent the town. So it's. There's just not a lot of them and Terry, I don't know if you know of any other communities.
I, I don't, I think that when New Gloucester did theirs, our town planner called up the state and asked them for a model ordinance. And I think that's how we got started, then of course it had to be fine tuned to meet our particular situation. To get back on one thing that Steve just said, in, I remember listening in one of the public hearings and people, many people would say. Yeah, this is going to look just like, and they mentioned another community down the road, it's awful. And, you know, it was not a project that we were involved with per se, but, you know, it was a project that was built in the middle of a field or the edge of a field in a very prominent location. And nobody asked the question, what's it going to look like? What can we do to minimize its presence in our rural community? In, in New Gloucester, where I, I serve on as the, the chair of the conference of planning committee. Several years ago. We, the, the town started to talk about solar and no one was really concerned about it. The solar boom is just starting and I brought a, raised a question once at one of the town committees. Who's responsible for drafting ordinances and I said, you know, the town is really naked. We could have a solar developer come in here tomorrow and, you know, propose something in some of our wonderful intervale fields. And we really wouldn't have much leg to stand on. And I said, you know, we may want to consider a moratorium to, to any future development. And gives us six months to, to craft an ordinance that's going to be acceptable to the town as a whole. And so the town decided to do that and for the next six months, you know, I've worked very closely with the, the town planner and many other people. And finally, after several public hearings and revisions, it was adopted. Well, we have not had any applications yet and that may be because of the way the ordinance was written. I, I don't know why, but there's certainly a lot of opportunities in our town. Which has good infrastructure, a lot of open lands to see projects like this. I know somebody left a, a letter in our mailbox a few months ago and my wife opened it up. It was from a solar developer saying, hey, you've got some, some backland. We, we have a, a farm in one of the rural parts of town and it would have been a great location for a solar project. Well, because it wouldn't have even been visible from the road. But, you know, my wife didn't even show it to me, it ended up in the garbage can.
So what did, what did the town level just, just approve of? I know they should.
Moratorium.
Or, yeah.
Language, just a moratorium.
Yeah. Yeah, that was an example of town that did not have really anything in place to deal with, you know, a solar project directly. Although they did have a pretty good comprehensive plan and scenic inventory in their comp plan. But, you know, I, I think Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that scenic list or, or the list of resources could be part of an ordinance too. It doesn't have to wait till the next comp plan update necessarily.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right.
Great, thank you gentlemen, Steve here has a question, I believe.
I just have a comment about level. I read a couple of newspaper articles that said that on Saturday, the town passed. A new ordinance that limited solar developments to a maximum of ten acres.
Thank you, Steve, Sarah.
I got a quick question, it may not be appropriate question, but it's something I have. What would be the ballpark of a. Of a B I A cost, what would be the ballpark cost on something like that for?
I think it would be, you know, a high four figure number to a. It would probably started at, at a high four figure number to a, in range to a lower five figure number. You know, if these things go on and there's a lot of mitigation work and there's a lot of a butter work and there's need for more. Study for a particular area, that's when costs can go up. But the base cost is not, especially for solar, which generally has less of a visual impact than these bigger scale projects. It's, it's not astronomical compared to what, you know, is being, you know, the expenses that are being. Generated for other, you know, the other consultants that develop these projects or, 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 you know, a town hiring a consultant to study a project. It's. It's not an astronomical fee.
Understood, point made, thank you, Steve.
Thank you so much.
And then George, any question?
Yeah, I, I do, and, and this is a little bit more fine grained question, but. The ordinance that we're actually amending to develop regulations for. Solar energy facilities is one that actually. Currently addresses all larger scale commercial development, commercial and non residential development in town. And the ordinance and the town's implementation of the ordinance has a. Less than stellar track record on mitigating on, on the. Success of the. Screening plantings that the ordinance requires. You know. For example, my, my wife and I will drive past one of the projects the planning board approved and there will be some planting there. But, you know, it's not going to have any screening value for another twenty years. And I'm just wondering how, how you, how you approach those kind of mitigation questions. In the context of, of your work in, in a larger, even much larger scale facility like a solar farm or commercials.
A, a couple of things, one is to say, if you develop an ordinance. You may want to be very specific about what would constitute a reasonable amount of screening. You know, a, a single line of pine trees is just not going to cut it. You know, you may specify that it's a minimum of, you know, X feet of depth or three rows of trees or whatever. And then also specify the minimum size of plant material to go in. Perhaps more importantly though, is to, to have somebody knowledgeable to review the project. There's a lot of towns that we deal with that require that the applicant post a performance bond or establish an escrow account. And that account then is used to pay an outside reviewer that will come in and evaluate, in this particular case, the visual effects. It will evaluate the mitigation plans, they'll walk out in the field and, you know, evaluate how the project may fit into the landscape. And they, then they work with the planning board to recommend improvements to the plan. And then lastly, there's needs to be some sort of a follow up, you know, once the plantings are in place. Does the code officer have the ability to come back a year or two years later to make sure the plants are still thriving? And to force the developer to replace any plants that aren't meeting the intent of the, the approved document.
Thank you.
Thanks. Rich, yeah, and just for everybody's awareness, we are a few minutes after seven. I just want to make sure we're paying attention because we do have other business to attend to.
Mine kind of, kind of goes with George's screening. I know we need to be specific to some extent, but it also, I think, leaves the door open where we, in some cases, need to be flexible. With the screening. Brings back the picture of the, the road that had the open area in the field and they moved it back and it was only, you know, showing a little bit. And shrubs was able to take care of the situation. And I'd hate to think that we'd end up with an ordinance that required somebody to plant. Pine trees and everything that really can be covered up by shrubs, it's more a comment than a question.
That, that's an excellent point, you know, and we, we like to think that whatever's done is appropriate to that particular situation. You can't have a one size fit all mitigation plan.
Yeah, okay, and the, the other question I had. I don't know if you've dealt with this at all, but I see ordinances have, say, oh, should be protected by a buffer or vegetated screen. A berm, to me, a berm is one of the ugliest things I've seen. Do people typically require them to, other than grass? I wonder if, have you seen situations where berms were implemented and all it was, was grass on it?
I, I, I could show you some examples of berms that we've done that are, are beautiful because they were planted. It's not, and the, the beauty of a berm is that it raises the height of a four foot tree to effectively be as valuable as an eight foot tree. And ultimately, if you do enough planting around it, the berm itself may disappear. But it's, it's also a question of how the berm is designed, you know, it doesn't look like the proverbial snake under the carpet. It needs to be designed in such a way. That, that is, that is sympathetic to the natural landforms.
Well, thank you, thank you for your efforts with us.
Well, th- these are, these are challenging projects and, you know, as we all deal with the realities of our, our energy supply. You know, we, we do an awful lot of work with wind power, we're doing a lot of offshore wind power work right now. And they're, they're fascinating issues because it brings to the forefront the need to have good energy sources on one hand. But also to protect and preserve our, the, the environment that, you know, bring us to where we are.
Yeah, finding that balance is, that's the big challenge, so.
It certainly is.
All right, any more questions for our guests? No? Thank you again, very much appreciate your time, Terry, Steve, and your expertise, so thank you very much. I'm sure we'll be in contact with you once again, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. To me, it seemed like there's a lot of food for thought based on that information and it brings up some, some sort of logistical questions I want to make sure we tackle. In addition, I know we need to also continue going through the ordinances we have to review items and mark off any kind of changes we need to do. But before we go anywhere with that, I just want to make sure I'm asking this group right now. We spent an hour doing this, we still have two more things to, to deal with. And we have a guest here, sir, are you representing?
I'm Mark Bauer, I'm representing the Chestnut Road. Manisha or.
Gotcha. Okay, so I want to be sensitive to your time as well. So, so for the planning board, how do, how do you wish to proceed and we've spent an hour? Do we go on with review of the ordinance for a little bit of time?
I was, my personal feeling is we should go ahead and, and move on to the other new business items on the agenda. And if we have time at the end of the meeting, we can always return to. Further discussion of solar.
Okay.
And I, I, my thoughts, George put together some good information in there that I think we ought to. Deal with, not, may not be denied, but it's something that we should go on through.
Yeah.
Early as convenience.
Very, very good point, thank, thank you, Rich. Sarah, are you in, are you sort of in line with that thought process?
Yeah, I'm prepared to go with a new business.
So Pete, you okay? And so Craig, we, we were just talking while you stepped up for a second, that if you don't mind, we could go on to the other items on the agenda. And then come, if time permits, come back to more solar discussions. Okay, so let's, let's do that then. So go on to a new business, the, the two items we have to deal with tonight. A condo minium dissolution. The applicants are Manisha, is it Fat Cat? The poor, okay. Jeffrey and Joanna Beers, James Smith. The location is Chestnut Road on Meslofski Lake, map twenty. The location is Chestnut Road on Meselonski Lake, map 20 lot 23. The purpose is to convert an existing condominium into three single-family lots and one commonly owned lot. So are you here to help guide us through? Okay, and I'm sorry, your name again?
Mark, Mark Bauer.
Thanks, Mark Bauer.
You're representing the three unit owners of the condominium. It's kind of a funny ownership structure. It's not common and it's part of the reason why they want to turn it and convert it back into to single-family lots because I think most people, you know, on a camp on a lake like that's supposed to be late, expect to have like a single-family ownership, not a condo form of ownership. So, so I kind of laid everything out to the best of my ability in the March 21st letter. Everyone has that. I don't want to belabor the points that may be made in there, but in essence, back in 1988, there are a couple of property owners who acquired titles to four parcels of land, sort of put them together into a condominium. There were existing structures that date back to the 1930s, my understanding is. And they put that all into a condominium ownership structure. And it's been operating like that since since then, but really, when it comes down to it, the owners have sort of thought of it and operated as single-family camp lots. And with, they have a shared subject of joining the own lot in the back that where the where the common septic system is located. And that's where the wastewater is, it goes from their, from their camp lots. But other than that, I mean, they have a, they have a shared road, obviously, for access to their properties. But other than that, you know, it's, it's, it's really three defined areas of land and and they've operated as, you know, single-family lots. But I guess what's on paper doesn't match what's in the field. And so that's what here tonight to try to do is to try to sort of get it back to, you know, where, where reflect what's actually, you know, how it's, how it's treated on the ground. And also you get it into a more, you know, typical ownership structure of just each person on the single-family lot. They jointly own the fourth lot that houses the septic system. And they also commonly own the road that provides them with access. There's some, you know, material in here about the, and also I brought a copy of the plan that the surveyor, that their surveyor prepared of the proposed lots, which really match with the lots that were on the recorded condominium flat, which I think included with the letter as well. So nothing changes in terms of where the lot lines are, the lot lines match up with where the condominium plat lines were, so to speak. So I have a copy here and I think I sent a copy in with that. It's the same thing. This one's rolled, that one's folded. So really, what, you know, what we're here tonight is for approval is approval of that, of that plan. And as the town attorney has weighed in, yeah, it's a tough one to just sort of walk through.
Sure.
What do we have here?
Does each cabinet, I thought I read, and I'm not sure it makes any difference. But the leach field is on this lot, but each of them have their own tank?
Right, yeah. So this is the, this is the leach field back here. This is lot four or proposed lot four. The three camp lots are here, lot, lot one, lot two, lot three, with the existing structures on there. These dashed lines are the lot lines, which match up with the condominium plat lines that were, that were already approved and recorded. And here is the common road there. And in the, basically, they, yeah, they each have a tank on their lot that, you know, holding tank that flows into the leach field back here, which is lot four, and that will be continued to be, nothing will change with respect to that or really with respect to anything other than on paper. And so, thank you for holding on. You want to be helpful to see closer. Sorry, I should have brought shrunken copies of that.
Okay.
Okay.
So pardon me, Mr. Bauer. So does everybody know where this is? And we talked about it, that it's down Chestnut Lake. Do you know where that is? So you know, when you're going up towards Oakland, like towards the Colliers old place, there's a place on the right-hand side where there's a white colonial house. And then just after that, there's a newer ranch, log cabin kind of-ish area, Meselonski.
So where's the railroad track?
Down near the lake. So a mile down that road maybe. So you have to go from the top of the hill, basically, kind of hiding in?
There's between the lake and the railroad track.
Correct.
So you have to ask this.
Correct.
I can, I can have a few questions, some basic questions.
Sure.
Yeah, can I ask one last?
Sure, ask one.
All right, so the buildings are in the same area and the word before.
Just one second, just one second. Excuse me, George and Rich, we can't hear the question if you don't mind, just just one second.
Yeah, I just want to get a few questions out there.
Sure.
The setback from the property lines, it needs to be 10 feet. Okay, so the first thing is, are these three buildings set back beyond 10 feet from the sidelines?
The buildings will not, well, we're proposing to move the buildings. The building has been in those spots since the 1930s when they were built.
Okay.
But what the, I think what the ordinance requires is that the, that the dimensional requirements that were, this is when such lots are divided, each, each lot thus created must be as conforming as possible to the dimensional requirements of this ordinance. And so, you know, I think we're, where the, the the buildings are existing and they really can't be, you know, moved at this point. They would safely, I don't think, we're proposing to put the lot lines where, where the condo plat lines were.
So the question is, are any of them less than 10 feet from the side? At this point, I don't know.
I, I, we don't have a measurement on that. I guess I would have to look at the scale to know. Are probably closer than perhaps closer than, that one's not obviously, yeah.
And, and then.
They're all really, you know, closer to the water than what you, you know, what you have now for a new construction.
Yeah. That was, that was the, that is a big question. Whether or not we go with it, I don't know, but you know, that's something we want to consider. And, and it's, and then close to the water, so you know, you can't really, if you're going to go up, you know, make, reconfigure, you only go up some feet relationship how close it is to the water. So are you saying that can change anything?
They're not proposing to make any changes to the buildings. No, it's really just, like I said, really just a change on paper of what the ownership structure is from, from a condo ownership to single-family lots.
Okay, then how the right-of-way goes for the road? Is there any particular agreement between the three lots? They all have right-of-ways?
Yes, well, the details are provided right away and the, as the, one of the survey notes talks about the fact that all that stuff is handled through the condominium currently. If the condominium is dissolved, they'll enter into a road, road association, a simple road association. You know, road maintenance agreement type thing where they will, you know, they'll share the cost of the road and they'll figure out how to, you know, how to divvy that up fairly and so forth. But that will be part of the, you know, just, just like if you, anyone can have a, you know, single-family separately owned lots and they share the road and they share the expenses for the roads.
The other thing is, you know, the leach field back there, is it large enough to accommodate the number of bedrooms in each, the collective, collective number of bedrooms of each, you know, building, you know, so you get three bedrooms and you can't, you know, that's nine bedrooms, so is it would the, the field be large enough to accommodate nine bedrooms, you know, that kind of thought process?
So, yeah.
I just wanted to play, play, play that out.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I know that, I mean, it's not a new leach field, it's been, you know, it's been, you know, working for them for as long as they've all been owning it, two, two of the owners date back to the late 90s, early 2000s. And the one owner just purchased back in the fall. And I think that's kind of what precipitated the idea here. So nothing, you know, not, they're not proposing any more bedrooms than currently, and it's, and it's currently serving their purposes. You know, I'm not sure, you know, other than when it was installed, you know, when, when it's been, you know, been looked at. But I think it's been, it's been serving their purposes for, for these number of years. So if there's anything, you know, unfortunately, I don't, I'm not an engineer, so I don't have, you know, information about that. They, you know, they're, they hired a surveyor for the lot line purposes, but they haven't hired an engineer for this project because it's, it's fairly, you know, but, you know, I think there'd be a minimal, you know, request to change. And so if, if the board wanted something more complicated, like an engineer to look at things or something, they would certainly consider that. But, you know, just.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer, because, because what you're describing is, is that what they're asking for is lines on paper to change. There's no proposed construction, there's no proposed addition of bedrooms or anything like that. We're just talking about who owns what and where it's delineated on paper.
Exactly. It actually, in some ways, the, the lines won't even change. I mean, so the, the lines, the surveyors' lines there match up with the lines that were previously approved on the condo plat. So in some ways, even the lines won't change, but certainly the paper will change. It'll, you know, it will go from being a condominium to, to this sort of lot plan.
Yep.
And the purpose of this plan is so that, you know, a future deed can refer to this plan that was approved by the planning board on such and such a date, you know.
Understood.
Hopefully April 7th, 2022. But so that's, that's the idea behind the plan is that sort of there's something, there's some piece of paper that shows, yeah, it's no longer a condominium. This was approved by the planning board as, you know, three separate lots and a commonly owned four lot.
Understood. Thank you. I do have some, some comments, but I want to make sure that George and Rich have a chance to ask questions if you had any.
My only, based on the town attorney's input in here, Mark wrote a letter to the town attorney and indicated that it's good, whatever. At that point, assuming we agree with the town attorney, that we just think about the only thing that we need to, and I, I think it's okay. The lots are as conformant as possible. Looking at that, I don't see that there's anything obvious that would indicate that all the outlines are there. I have some general questions, but I think it's because we go back to making the lots as conformant as possible. You go into it and say, what if this lot was completely cleared? And these other two are 30% clear. You separate the lots. You created a lot that is more non-conforming because it has no clearing when it was, when it was all one lot. It was, say, 20% vegetated or whatever. And now with the splitting them up, you've made a lot with no vegetation. I don't think that we can really deal with that. I think that's something based on.
And we talked about that the last time we encountered this issue just a month or so ago. Except in that case, it was a one single lot. And I mean, the fact of the matter is, one of these people, one of these owners could be basically penalized in terms of future development if it happens to be their lot that has more than 20% in an unvegetated state as of today. They may not be able to do any expansion whatsoever. They couldn't put a porch on it if they weren't, even out the back. Whereas the neighbor could because they ended up with a lot that has only 10% unvegetated currently. But that's, that's, that's on them.
Right. But, yeah, and that's the risk that we identify, I think, by talking this out. We don't do this type of, we don't do condo dissolution frequently.
It's really the ownership structure. And I think the reason it's before you, according to the town attorney, is that the, when the condominium, the, one of the notes on the condominium plan that was recorded said, any changes to this need to go back to the planning board. And so, I mean, the change being that it's no longer going to be a condo. So that's what I think from the tenant, from the officer's perspective, that's why it needs to come back to the board because it's, it's going to be a change to that plan that was recorded. And, and essentially the change will be reflected in approval of this plan, which is a different ownership structure.
Yep, understood. Sarah, the light bulb went on when we were talking about the unvegetated states and the different soon-to-be lots, apparently. Did you have an additional question? Because I knew, I heard the, it was gasp-worthy. I heard, I heard a thing.
I have a question while she's ruminating.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so I, I need a little help understanding. And our attorney didn't raise this as an issue, but two, looking at the plot plan, two out of the three lots are not going to have 100 feet of shore frontage. How, how does that? How does that play out with respect to the state minimum lot size law that requires 100 feet of, you know, of shore frontage? Is it the fact that, is it not relevant? Because under the Shoreland zoning, it has to comply with the minimum lot size ordinance. Lot size law, state law. The, is it not, is that not relevant because the condominium plot plan also didn't have 100 feet of shore frontage? Or is it some other reason?
I think it's another reason. It's, it's what I laid out in the letters. I don't think that the minimum lot size law applies here because what the minimum lot size law is designed to do is make sure that if you're disposing of sewage, septic on your lot, that the lot has to be at least 20,000 square feet and it has to have at least 100 feet of frontage if it's on the water. Here, the leach field was not located on those properties.
Right.
And I think the town attorney agreed with my analysis here is that, that the, when you're, and there's actually an attorney general's opinion on this, on this issue that I put in a footnote in the letter as well, is that when the, when the, when the sewage is being treated on a different lot, you know, not on the lot that, that, that the single-family dwelling is, then it doesn't really, it doesn't implicate the, the minimum lot size law. Because that law, under Title 12, it's designed to ensure that you have a lot big enough for a leach field. So you're not causing any damage to the, the water body that you're adjacent to. Here, the leach field was located in the rear, you know, behind all three of these lots and behind the road as well. And so our position is that, that, you know, that, that provision just doesn't apply. There's also an exemption in the minimum lot size law for structures that pre-existed in 1973. So that's a different reason why I don't think it applies. But I think the broad, you know, the, the, just from a sort of a threshold issue is that it, it, it's not, that we're not disposing of solid waste on these three lots as being disposed of, or sorry, the fourth shared lot behind.
Yeah, no, thank you for that, the fact that these are elderly cottages is important. I don't know that I agree with the analysis that shore frontage is exclusively about what threat wastewater, subsurface wastewater disposal poses to just drinking water supplies. And the, the probability of the system failing. I think there's an aesthetic aspect to that as well in terms of the, why that law was passed in the first place back in the 70s. But, but that's irrelevant in this case, I think.
Yeah, so green fathering applies.
I'm not sure about that. I'm really.
Yeah. Basically. Yeah, even though that's not a legally defined term.
Right. If we go back.
We've had this decision before, right? Green fathering.
Yeah, the, yeah, yeah, essentially, yes. The relevant point is gentleman made that, you know, these, these, these structures pre, pre-exist the Shoreland zoning ordinance.
I don't relish disagreeing with George, but I'm not sure that back in the 70s or the 70s, lot size laws put into DHS versus DDP. That aesthetics was.
Yeah, well, I may be, I may be applying in 2020. Yeah, well, I may be, I may be applying a two thousand twenty two values to a decision date nineteen seventy three or. At the plumbing program, could care less what it looked like from the lake.
All right, Sarah, did you have a question?
Well, I and you hang out on the um item that um Peter brought up. It's the the ten feet distance from the from the proper line to the structure. That's one, but you know, I I'm new to the board, all right, so and then the other portion is that. Uh some places hanging my head that we have to have like a fifty. Um feet distance between the water source and the and the lich area. So I don't know, I don't have a way to measure that here, or knowing where the the uh the uh. The the. The spring, what you call it, what you guys call it, the well, is located and and make sure that it's fifty feet away. I'm not sure if that applies here.
It would only apply if it was either, uh if it was a new system.
Right, and it does.
It only applies as a new subsurface.
The grandfather already covered everything here then.
I I think the answer is yes.
Okay.
See, everything's pretty much nineteen seventy one, is that?
Yeah, so everything's existent, there's no changes to buildings, there's no. I mean, to me, it's pretty straightforward, um.
The only thing I are, the only other thing I would like to see is that would be necessary, but it seems that everybody is already. Sold into it, is that you mentioned that there's a a drawing with the old plot of the of the condominiums. So it would be nice to just have a glance at that and see what's, they're sort of the same.
You got a coffee here.
Oh, perfect.
That would be good.
Yeah.
I thought I I thought I included it in the letter, I apologize.
So while he's looking for that, I had a question maybe for Richard. So, uh Richard, in the letter from the town's attorney, uh there was a suggestion that the board may want to request if the applicant. Include a review from the local plumbing inspector.
Uh so I have been down there and I actually, they are, what I can tell, well, I can tell you, they're all nonconforming. Uh lots. And I measured, uh, Mr. Place and his was just over eight hundred feet, so he's not, I'm assuming they're all nonconforming structures as well. However, I don't see that any of this has to do with a condo dissolution as far as. They don't change anything, nothing, nothing's going on, they just don't want to be considered a condominium association, they want to be considered three camps.
Yep.
Um and that's, that's kind of like button drive, I mean, yes.
So so the question I had about the local plumbing inspector is. Is to the adequacy of the system. It's sufficient?
Um I am, I did not check out the system, I was down there for a different purpose, but uh to my knowledge, they haven't had any problems. Uh Jim, I I spoke with James Jimmy as he goes by.
Yeah.
And uh they haven't had any problems, they just wanted to get this dissolved so that they're not considered a condominium association or.
Mm-hmm.
A bunch of condominiums just want to be their own camps, um so as I said, they are nonconforming in both aspects, however. I hate to word grandfather, they're old, it's all old, and so it's really doesn't kind of play into this.
Elderly, elderly.
Well, I mean, I, if there's a purpose for me going down there to do uh some sort of a plumbing inspection, it's not a problem, I just don't know. Now, I don't perceive why we need to do that.
If there's anything I'd see, if it were visually failing.
Yeah.
Sewerage running out of, whereas one thing, but if the thing is not failing and it's been. In the ground all these years, I I see that being almost a grandfather situation.
Right, uh yeah, I'm.
bedrooms being added or anything.
One of the, one of the unit owners purchased in November, I know that she did, went through the whole inspection process, including the plumbing inspection, so. I mean, unfortunately, don't have any of that documentation, but I know that, you know, that you, that unit was just purchased back in November.
Yeah.
And I'm, you know, I'm sure that having known her, that that would, she would, you know, if there was any issue at all with the subject, she would. You know, on that and and make that known to them, so.
Yeah.
I don't think that there's an issue, but you know, uh if there's some concern about that.
I'm a seasonal or year old.
A seasonal, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's nothing to introduce doubt about system failure, so we have every reason to believe that the system's adequate as it is. We talked about the request is for lines on paper to reflect ownership change, not change in dimensional. To anything really over there, and we're talking about the dissolution of a condo association. As I understand it, um so I want to make sure I ask the board, are there any other questions for Mr. Bauer? Go ahead.
Yeah, I I guess for you, Mr. Bauer, and maybe for the board uh as well, and and it's really not a question of substance like. Craig, I really don't have any problem with uh the substance of this, this, the dissolution, uh but we have, you know, they. Really have two ordinances this falls under, one is shoreline zoning and the other is the subdivision ordinance. Uh according to the town attorney, because this wasn't approved as a subdivision. Um and so I I just have a process question, really, on the latter part, and that is the uh. Uh what would be required uh? Uh for uh documentation of our decision, other than our minutes, which I I don't think would be adequate, because I assume you got to put something in the registry of deeds. So I did find in the MMA uh plan board handbook, uh a sample form. Interestingly done by William Dale of your floor floor firm, and back in the nineteen nineties, um. Uh on on abandoning and approving subdivision plan, uh it might be focused, might be a little bit more of. The developer with bankrupt or something like that, but um so it's more of a process question, you know, how do we document? Our decision. So it meets your needs for going to the registry of deeds.
Right.
Well, the first thing I would say is the the plan itself is is one thing that that we definitely need, um because that would be. Signed and recorded in the registry, and that would be referred to in the future for any conveyance of any of these plots, um. And so that's, that's, that's one, one key thing. Um I think, you know, having something in writing that would be essentially an amendment to the prior approval. Um that's amending it, I mean, the, you know, what's not changing is that that prior condo flat that 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 Sarah has. Um, you know, that did approve the the uh subdivision. This is not changing really anything about the subdivision, where the buildings are anything like that, it's just an amendment to change uh the ownership. Ship structure and to approve the location of the lot lines um as being as conforming as possible um to the ordinance, so that's. Really, part and parcel of what we would want in in terms of a, if you were to put it, put together a short written decision would be. Um just sort of reflective of this language, um you know, in the in the ordinance that I pointed out, the the section twelve E three. Of of the Belgrade shoreline zoning ordinance, um uh that, you know, that our words, if we're such lots are are divided each. But thus created must be as conforming as possible to the dimensional requirements of this order. Um and because I think that's, that would be the key for, you know, down the road, if someone would say, what, you know. What was approved here, you know, when when this was changed, um that's, I think, would need, be needed to be approved, and that's consistent with what I think the town attorney. Was saying as well, so I think that's process wise, I I don't have a document in mind or, you know. Uh I don't have a Bill Dale sample, uh. My old boss, who's now gleefully retired, um. But uh that's, that's in essence what we're be looking for, um you know, or hoping for in terms of a of a.
Okay, because what we have before us right now is basically just a a. Request for an opinion, basically, rather than uh particularly with, uh and and actually, there's nothing. We're requesting an amendment to the uh uh plain, original planning board rule of the subdivision. So we would need that.
Mm-hmm, good point.
For the file, and then then we could. You know, I I assume the plot plan, the new plot plan would have a place for us to sign off on. Oh, that does, okay.
Yeah.
Because right now, all we have is the, is in writing, is a request for our opinion on, do we agree with basically the town attorney?
Right.
Yeah, on the, on the, on the shoreline zoning ordinance aspect of this.
Yep.
I I think I had that right. Yeah, I'll just say that that's a good point, and I and I think really would be, the idea for, it it didn't dawn on me until the town attorney said that that. There was that note on the condominium recorded uh plan, that I think it says any. Uh no lot will be re-subdivided without prior board approval. I I guess I would take a slight exception to what the town attorney said, that 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 we're not re-subdividing any lot. And and that, that's what you, that's why he said it needed to come back before this board. Um so I don't really agree that we're re-subdividing anything, and we're, we're, we're happy to come before the board to get, you know, to make sure that there's no concerns with the plan. Um, you know, that we're asking you to sign um to as a, as an approval of those lot lines, but. We're not re-subdividing any lot, and the 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 lot is uh essentially, the lots are remaining as is, it's just that they're. It's going from, you know, essentially a condominium with four uh what they call limited common elements um to. Or separate lots, um so, you you know, I think that that, that's why the 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 letter was not really set up as a. We are seeking approval for for this, it was more uh in line with my understanding from talking to town manager. That there was a recent, you know, very similar request made, and I think he said this was sort of how it was done, it was kind of a request to the board for their. For your, you know, opinion on it, to make sure that 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 the uh. The the ordinance provision was met in terms of, you know, that, yep, the the dimensional requirements are met to the greatest extent possible. Um and and that sort of thing, but it, you know, if it would be helpful, I mean, I I'm happy to make the requests ver- verbally tonight, but I worry if it would be. Uh cleaner for your files or whatever to to actually submit um some sort of an application. Unfortunately, there wasn't an application uh form for uh uh dissolution of a condominium and creation of four camp lots, you know, or three camp lots, but. Uh you know, so that's why it was just sort of set up as a letter as opposed to an application. Uh I'm happy to to submit whatever the board needs for, you know, a formal request, but that. Uh in essence, is, you know, kind of what I said verbally tonight is what what we're looking for.
Peter, I I tend to agree with Baron at this point, I don't know, maybe legally is considered a re-subdivision, I don't know, but it it. In my mind, it's not a re-subdivision as much as it is an amendment to what was approved by the planning board in nineteen eighty nine.
Yeah.
And and so, you know, a letter just explaining that, we're requesting that amendment. With that plot plan, new plot plan, um would seem to me to be more more than adequate. For our needs, and and that way, that there'd be something in, the town would have a record of what, you know, how this has changed.
Right.
And uh and there would be something to go into the registry of deeds and notify future potential buyers.
Yeah.
This is stamped by William Schipman, there's a spot up here for the chair and the members of the day. To Simon, so this will be a legal document here, so.
I think that was, that that would serve the purpose of it.
Yes, and we can put a condition that we get a letter. So we can approve it.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine with me, yeah, it's just so that we know, you know, six months from now.
Yeah.
Why this changed.
I I agree, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a good approach for a very uncommon situation, and it's from a record keeping perspective, I was thinking, okay, we have. Currently, one big glob called the condo, right? Now eventually, it's going to be four separate records, so to have tho- those things and then have copies so that each person. Would then have, or that each property would then have that available to them um in the future. Uh that would be good record keeping for them, because I'm thinking as they go forward, there may be other transfers of ownerships and. Things of that nature, which would then allow them to act independently and not, oh my god, this is part of the condo thing, so. So there is that aspect that I want to make sure we take care of, so I really like the idea of having the letter come in. Um I I I'm in, I'm in favor of that approach, Sarah.
You said that, I got.
Uh-oh.
Another question, so, so we have four lots, and there are three lots that are going to depend on one lot for. Uh sources possible.
For the, yeah, the the same as it's currently.
So ten, ten years from now, let's say, we have owners that have no relationship whatsoever and. Complete different owners, or they're using the same leach field. How how issues, how how that's going to be indeed that, you know, each one of the three lots in front have access to that?
They'll, well, they have an agreement.
They have an agreement.
For maintenance of the of the road and also the leach field.
Okay.
They'll have to have some simple agreement, but I think, I mean, you know, honestly, what, you know, with the condominium is if anyone, I don't know if anyone's. Um, you know, involved in condominium, but you have to have an annual meeting, you have to file an annual, a a annual fee with the state and things like that, it's just. It's more that they don't want to go through the headache, they, you know, everyone looks at this as a single family thing, but now they're just going to have, you know, a a. A joint agreement for the road, a joint agreement, and and the the leach field, so basically, they'll, they'll, they'll have to agree, and any future owners will have to agree. To to pay their fair share of both the road costs, you know, plowing and grading, whatever, and uh and the leach field too, so. That'll be taken care of with a private agreement uh between the 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 unit owners, um and then I guess, going and having, I'd say. The the plan does make reference to the, to the old condominium plat. Um and and recording number, so the registry will cross-reference that, so if anyone looks up the old condo plat, it'll cross-reference. The recording information for this plan, and then they'll say, oh, yep, so the planning were approved that, we're all set, we got, you know, we've got a plan that's approving. This single family ownership structure, you know, we're all set.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, uh something in in writing from from the planning board would be helpful in addition to that, as as uh Mr. Steele said, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, does does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Address that question? So i- if this is an acceptable approach, I'm thinking a formal motion would be in order um. For us tonight, so would would anybody, would anybody like to promote something?
Why don't we just do it with? So you can explain what you want for a letter.
Um. So I'll make a motion that uh. One, we find that this meets the provisions of the shoreline zoning ordinance. And uh specifically.
Twelve E three?
Yes, that will do it, uh and secondly, that uh. We approve uh the revised plot plan, what's the date of that?
Two seventeen twenty two.
Two seventeen, of two seventeen twenty two, um. Under the subdivision ordinance. Uh on condition of receiving a written request to amend the original subdivision approval.
I think that nails it, I do. Did you want to have a date correction?
No.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
So motion seconded, any more discussion? Mr. Bauer, do you understand what we're asking?
Yeah, so I will, I will submit, um you know, as soon as possible, a a letter formally requesting an uh an amendment of uh the. The the board approved an amendment to the prior plan.
Yes.
Um and uh for, basically for uh essentially record keeping, you know, so.
Yes.
Evidence of a of a request and then approval of that request, that makes a lot of sense, so I mean, I'm anticipating a pretty short, maybe one page letter.
Yeah.
Is that good, okay?
Like one paragraph.
One paragraph, yeah. I I get paid by the words, so.
Yeah.
I think we need three or four pages.
All right.
So I, no, that makes a lot of sense, and so um would the board be signing the plan tonight, or?
That that is my anticipation, because I'm thinking we're going to vote on this in just one second, but we're in the discussion.
Yes, sorry.
Want to make sure, yeah, that's okay. Richard, are you cool with what we're?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, excellent, yeah, cool, yeah, you're good with it, right? Okay. Excellent, any other questions before we vote? So if none, roll call vote, so Craig in favor?
Yes.
Pete in, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And and alternates who would not vote, so, all right, so I will vote in favor.
Saying no, I said again.
Right, 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 exactly, as an alternate tonight, we have a full complement, so five in favor, none opposed. Uh the motion passes, so therefore, we'd be expecting to see that letter uh addressed to the ten.
Yeah, addressed to the US chair or what you think about you.
Uh no, I don't work here, just volunteer my time, so that's the best thing to do, I would say. So the best thing to do, I would say, yeah, I would say town manager and obviously CEO.
Okay.
CEO.
Yeah. Wouldn't wouldn't want to say anything, get lost.
Do we have two copies here or or just?
There's another copy.
Oh, it's right here, under my folder for you.
Yeah, oh, thank you. So.
So you want to say. You want to sign both?
Yeah, that way the town can keep one.
Yeah. I knew there was a reason to drop it.
You certainly may, I have a little Sharpie that I'm going to be signing.
You got a blue pen?
Should I should I use a black Sharpie or a blue pen, what from your perspective?
I, I like. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
So I'm going to go up here as chairman.
I'm going to be member. This one, this one.
Sally, so, yeah, she's, I'm the municipal group, she's the head of the municipal group.
Let me say this one?
I will. Okay.
I'll go over there.
Craig.
No.
You don't have to sign here.
Pete here.
My wife Becky.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I kind of thought that was, yeah.
Not many seals in the game.
It's not a common name. Yeah.
Yeah.
She always wore her, like, a few of her own ones.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd see her every other month or something, yeah. I've always liked her a lot. She enjoying retirement, I hope.
Yes. What line am I signing on?
By after.
Yep, so below Sarah, yeah.
Okay.
And we need to bring this over here.
Today's date, I'm going to date this.
Better, yeah. Today's date. For attack.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you didn't answer any more. Yeah. Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Do you mind please signing? And so after Craig and. Thank you, so we've all signed and this is dated, same with this one, so I'm going to turn these over. Does this go back to Mark? Mark, this is yours?
Okay, thank you.
So we have signed those two things, I think. All things are good. And so then, yeah, so the next thing is we just need to see the letter and then you can take whatever other action we need to do, so.
Thank you all for your, yeah, I'll save one with whichever one.
Mine was the whole one.
Yeah.
Terrible looking.
Yeah, you keep the clean one. I'm sure the registry will find.
Thanks, Mark, I think I think what was presented tonight is a little unusual but done very thoroughly. So thank you for your work on getting that done. And thanks for your cooperation with the town's attorney in terms of the interactions there.
Yeah.
Nice.
Good relationship, so.
That's great.
You're in good hands with him.
Fantastic.
All right. I'll send anything else.
No, sir, I think we're all good, have a great night, safe travels, how far do you have to go?
Oh, you have to work, I luckily avoided a an accident at two ninety five, every single time I drive north at two ninety five is an accident, so.
Okay.
I got there just just at the right time, so.
Okay, safe travels.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, good night.
Yes, can I ask you excuse early, I gotta go to work tomorrow and I gotta get through it.
If you need to go. Yeah, if you need to go, thank you very much. Yep, thanks, we're going to handle the next one, so thanks Pete, have a good night, drive carefully, don't beat your best. Yep, absolutely, that's why we have an alternate, thank you, Rich, for being able to step in, really appreciate that. Thanks, okay, then. Okay, the next item we have is item B, shoreline application. This is for Randall Briggs and Randall, I think you're, are you here?
Yeah.
Yes, can I see it?
I can, I can, yeah, thank you. Thanks for your time tonight and thanks for your patience as we got through a lot of stuff to get to this one. The location here is three twenty four Timber Point Road, map eight A lot five. This is a nonconforming lot, one hundred and thirty five feet of shore frontage on a nonconforming and a nonconforming structure, partially inside the one hundred foot high water mark. There will be no change to the footprint. The purpose are for interior changes to add a bathroom, enclose a first floor bedroom, slab in place from past permits, see attachments, move the decking stairs, providing more zone compliance. I'm not sure what that means, replacing rotting deck decking boards, replace window and doors on ground floor. Thank you, so we may have questions as we go through this, so between you and Randall, I think we'll probably be fine.
All right, I think, so George and I talked and he recalled that originally Randy had a permit for, if you look at the picture here, I think this will be the best way to go, the most helpful, quick. So the overhang on the house to the left below it had previously been approved for a slab. And that is in the attached minutes from, I don't even know when this was from, but. So he had this already in place, it was already approved, was an enclosed three hundred and fifty square foot area beneath this existing overhang. So he's already got his impervious surface below there. And what he's wanting to do is enclose that impervious surface so he can have a bedroom. And then once again, trying to. You look at the existing first floor and on the back to be the proposed first floor. The only difference here is he's moving the stairs back. So when I put in there to be more conforming with the ordinance, he's actually moving back away from the water for the stairs further away from the water. So as far as the proposed and existing, that's pretty much it for changes for the first floor. And then the existing ground floor and the proposed ground floor where he is essentially showing us that he is enclosing that impervious footprint below the overhang of the house to make another bedroom. On top of that, he simply wants to fix some decking boards and replace some windows and doors. And I think that's the easiest way to break down for you so that it's good.
Okay. You almost wouldn't need a permit from us.
Yeah.
I'm adding that. You could say moving the stairs would require a permit. If it weren't for the bedroom, all the other work is either maintenance or rearranging the interior.
Right, right. But but there is a spot spot that that does fall into a permit requirement area. I don't have any problems with this as I see it, I don't, I just want to make sure we're handling this correctly, right? Right, absolutely. So so I have a process question, forgive me. When we do this, we usually go through that the package in front of us, we have questions and so on, then we do a findings effect. I don't have a findings effect.
Oh, you don't?
I don't think I do. Hang on, hang on, hang on, maybe I do.
It should be right beyond the old bits.
Oh, okay, I was thinking that was part of something else, I do have it, I do have one, okay, I apologize, so. All right. Great. And oh, yeah, that's right after the minutes from the fifteenth of October two thousand twenty when we approved the original request, okay. Yeah, Randall, Randy, do you have any comments or or anything to add to what we've talked about so far?
Well, the only thing that I heard that I wanted to clarify was we're not adding a bedroom. We have the existing house is a three bedroom house and we are rearranging the downstairs and it will remain a three bedroom house.
Thank you for that, Randy.
Good point.
I misspoke.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, that is important, right, for.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'm afraid we have to do some handwritten stuff here. Well, before I get ahead of myself, are there any other questions or comments or anything that you need to do?
I think this is pretty straightforward, I would just, the only thing I would note is go through the findings of fact and that part of the approval last October included a fairly well engineered improvement to stormwater, the management of stormwater there by A. Podston. So not that this is going to generate more stormwater, but because it's not new footprint.
So just adherence to it or?
Well, since it's already under, it's enclosing in an area that's already under roof.
Yeah, so it's part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point. Address. Three twenty four Timber. Okay. All right, bear with me as we go through the findings of fact, everybody. I'm sorry, it just takes a while to to write this rather than type it, I wish it. Okay, so the applicant on date, today's date, applied for shoreline permit for interior changes. I'm going to say the wording on on this application that we have received, Randy, from you dated two twenty three twenty two uses the word add a bathroom and then move a bath, and it says move a bathroom. Oh.
A bathroom.
I'm sorry, add bathroom, move bedroom, I'm sorry, okay. I'll keep, I'll stick to the same words. Yeah.
By the way, thank you very much for the very well done site plan.
Okay, thank you, that's no problem.
Okay, the application was presented to the planning board on today's date, which is four seven twenty two. Conclusions of law, section two conclusions of law based upon the application materials. Standby. So based on based upon the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents and other materials submitted to it. In the above findings of fact, the Belgrade planning board finds that the project is permitted. Is is permitted. What does that line mean?
It says is a permitted use, there's a type over there.
That's weird.
Use is supposed to, that's on the line below is supposed to be up behind permitted.
Thank you, because it always reads so weird, is it permitted use under section fourteen, table one of the ordinance? And further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions of section sixteen D of the ordinance. So we'll go through the longer list of things and then the language we use typically is is the following, based on the application materials submitted in public record, right? So for each one of these things, that's what this applies. So that for number one, that it will maintain and healthful conditions. So by a vote, the board found that the standard was met, so this is about safe and healthful conditions. So we'll go in order, so Craig?
Yes, was.
That it was.
They have two choices here, so.
Was.
Wise path.
Right, the way I'm presenting is that it was met.
You're presenting as wise?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and then Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Yes, and I too am in favor, so five in favor, five in favor and none opposed that that was met. Number two, that it will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. So by a vote, the board found that the standard was met. And based on the same language that we used before. So this is about water, that it will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface water. So Craig, yes, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Me too, five in favor, none opposed. Three, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. This should be pretty straightforward because there's nothing changing from that regard. So by a vote, the board found that this standard was met based on application materials material submitted in public records, so Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Me? I too am in favor of that.
So it's five in favor, none opposed. Four, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. So Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I to him in favor, that's five in favor and none opposed. Five, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. So Craig, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Me too, five in favor, none opposed. This should be easy, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. By a vote, the board found the standard was met, so.
Yes.
Yeah, George, Rich, yeah, me too, five in favor and none opposed.
Missed stopping.
Yeah, we did, and then somehow.
Just jumped.
Yeah, it did jump a little bit, so we'll, thank you. So number seven, will avoid problems associated with flood plain development and use. So by a by a vote, the board found that this standard was met. So Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Me too, five in favor and none opposed, same language.
And then eight, we've typically gone through this and found out what was applicable and then voted on the end after going through all those. So so this eight is in conformance with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. By a vote, the board found that this standard was met based on evidence in the record and further as follows. So A, minimum lot standards, I would think that would be not applicable. Is that fair or is that? Is that fair or is that not accurate? Should it be that it was met?
He's not proposing anything to do with minimum lot standards.
Right, so is N A appropriate?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, B, principal and accessory structures. C, campgrounds. Thank you. D, individual private campsites. E, commercial and industrial uses, none were proposed. F, parking areas. G, roads and driveways. H, signs. Uh, I, stormwater runoff.
That's a name.
J, septic waste disposal systems.
Something adding that one, it's not a.
Right, it's just moving, yeah.
No, that was my fault.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. K, essential services. Thank you. How about this one, mineral exploration and extraction? N A, agriculture. And timber harvesting and land management roads. Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting, is any proposed? P, hazard trees, storm damaged trees, and dead tree removal, is any proposed? Q, exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements, any, any exemptions requested?
That's right.
R, revegetation requirements. Is that N A?
Not unless she's taking vegetation out.
Yeah, so the A. Erosion and sedimentation control. No dirt being moved. Okay, so this is get, gets funky. S, T, shoreline stabilization. U, soils. V, water quality. W, historical and archaeological sites. N A, is, X, resource protection.
I got a good question.
Surely.
Can we go back to J? We're talking, we're talking about septic waste disposal systems.
Mm-hmm.
So he's adding a bathroom.
He's not, oh.
He's adding a bathroom, doesn't.
Yeah. Because that, just so I can explain, bedrooms dictate the amount, the amount of people you could have in there.
Okay.
You could have one person in there with, you know, one bedroom, you could have two or three bathrooms, that doesn't generate any more waste.
Still gonna be the same amount.
Yeah.
That's another way to look at it.
Yeah.
The bathroom is just a port.
Correct, correct, it's another. Yeah.
It's all about supply and demand.
Right, well, well put. Um, okay, so having said all that, uh, we've gone through that, I think what we would do, let's see. So we only had one thing really to vote on, right? Within that, everything else was N A, and that was for principal and accessory structures, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, based on that, did this, let's see now, by a vote, the board found that this standard is only one, yeah, in, based on, on the land use standards that we listed, that the standard was met, uh, based on the evidence and the record and further as follows, so in favor of that would be Craig? Yes, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Me too, that's five in favor and none opposed, so that part's good. Next up, I think we get down to conditions of approval needed to meet required, Belgrade Shoreland Zoning Ordinance findings in section sixteen D. So this one has to do with managing stormwater runoff from newer expanded structures, none is proposed in this case.
Right, and we do have the option of, uh, if we deem it unnecessary, not to require it.
Okay, so, so Randy, you may recall this one, this is a standard condition, so we, we can, we may deem it unnecessary, so that's our discussion at this point. So team, what do you, what do you think?
I would write it, the rationale deemed unnecessary.
Okay, I, I would agree, I mean, I don't, there's not, everybody good? Okay. We use the same exact words. And to the best of my knowledge, it's been no, no, um, rumblings of any other conditions, so unless anybody has anything else, therefore time to move on to the last little bit. Those decisions. Okay, so based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law on four, seven twenty-two, the town of Belgrade, um, planning board approved by a vote, uh, we haven't voted yet, that the shoreline permit application of Randall. And it's Briggs, B-R-I-G-G-S. Develop these findings affecting conclusions of law and adopt on these findings on. Okay, so roll call vote in favor of approving this, is it so?
Motion?
Um.
Yeah, that's all.
I guess.
I make a motion to approve the application.
Thank you, good, and second, any more discussion? So all those in favor, thank you, George, that was good. I'm like, yeah, we just vote, so, thank you. So Craig, in favor? Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah, me too, so that's five in favor and none opposed.
Uh, so that was approved and it will be mailed to you, um, at home address, it looks like, down in Maryland.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you for your time, I just want one follow-up question, so in a year or two, I might want to do some renovations upstairs that, again, doesn't change the footprint. Do I need to go through this committee again, or will that be just a permit with Richard?
Um, my take, always see the CEO, before anything else happens, talk to him. It may not end up resulting in having to come see us, but please see him.
All right, thanks, get free time.
Right, yeah, thank you, have a good night.
Randy, if you have anything else after this, please contact me.
Absolutely, okay.
Okay. Right, right. Exactly, if it's only interior, I, but I, I just am hesitant to see that everything's allowed, we don't even know the details yet.
Mm-hmm.
So, just so you know, so I wrote on a copy on something that was provided, can I just give this to you? And so this was, it came out of the package.
There's two copies of it, actually, this was, it's nice and.
That was a good copy.
That was a good.
I should have used that one.
So you assigned that one, Peter?
I signed this one.
You signed one?
Yeah, so I wrote on this one and signed it, so that's our official record for what we decided.
Okay, and what about the signature?
And this is a copy, uh, this is a co- I don't, I don't even know where the original application is. It could be in on the, I don't know where it is, but. Okay, all right. Okay, how's everybody?
Good.
Steve stayed, I think we're obligated to do a little bit more.
I, I, I think so.
You said George has something important to say. I better stay.
Yeah, don't want to leave now, right?
He'll be disappointed by the hype.
You, you have got a copy of, uh, George's memo to the board.
At the original thing.
Was that included in Anthony's?
It was in the board package.
It was?
Yeah, but it's not in with the other stuff, it's back, kind of stuck in the middle.
Oh, no, I didn't see it, no. I stopped when I thought the solar stuff.
It's a trick.
It wasn't in the original package that they sent out. Missing, so we put it in the second.
Oh, I don't know if I got the second one.
Or which?
I got one. Monday, I think I got it.
The other one came out soon after.
Okay, I might have just overlooked it.
So what was it about our man? I mean, what was it about our man? Oh, it was, uh, George's email, it didn't say George, he didn't put his name on it, I thought at first she was trying to do it in.
Is it the memo?
The memo, yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to figure it out.
I, I figured it out after I started reading it.
I'll be damned, you're right.
Good, because was this your?
Yeah.
Analysis, I was thinking it was, but he didn't say it, so.
Dumbass.
All right, thank you very much, you're awesome.
Well, I have, yeah, some, some progress, essentially, power companies in the midst of, uh, performing an engineering study of the connection and putting the cost. That's important because the utilities commission, basically, not so many words. Comes down to that they won't sign contracts with projects that don't have much. So, um, we submitted a bid last summer and were shortlisted, but eventually they're not given a contract. We didn't have a lot of projects. Our company has so many other projects that piled in before us. So that's good, uh, and there's a, there's a bill in the legislature authorizing the utilities commission to undertake a new competitive bidding round for solar projects so that our projects would have that opportunity to participate in that. There are hopeful signs, but nothing, nothing in it.
What, what the bidding rounds meant in terms of, wow. Oh, that, oh, that bill, what the, what the bidding rounds will, will mean.
Well, there were two rounds of competitive bids thus far. We participated and proposed the project in the second round.
So no, no, all projects go through that, that's what you're saying?
No, it's a competitive bid. We did.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, well, there's, um, there's two basic tracks, so I'm looking, one is the competitive bidding, the other is the getting and the billing. Solar fields started out in the old days thinking, well, we're just maybe the name is killing, since the side, you know, and though. So a third round of competitive bids will be requested if the swing slate is passed.
Okay, so, um, let, shall we pick up where we left off, is that the place to go, which was page five, I think it was old item A, now B, right?
Right.
So, um, let's see, going through that, the rest of that page, other than renew, re, I'm gonna say remuneration, that's not really the right word, but the relettering of these things, there were no other comments on this page, right, from anybody? Or were there?
Well, we only got a, maybe I misunderstood, um, we didn't review, uh, these through the end of the page.
Okay, so, uh, because it says.
Excuse me, maybe, yeah, I think.
We've got.
Hey.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and so then the next one, which, which reads a description of the owner of the facility, the operator, and if different in details, qualifications and track record to run the non-residential solar energy producing facility. That part, we need to review more, and then go through the other parts. Yeah, okay, so the comment here, George, you had said either location is fine, I agree with your suggestion and add the reference to the list of applications submissions. Oh, and if required by the board and escrow account, payment for hiring, by the planning board of an independent technical legal expert to assist in the application review.
Well, that, you may recall was in response to, that discussion was in response to comments from the Lakes Committee.
Yes.
Along those lines, and, and, uh, I was just suggesting that wording could be tweaked.
So if, like, the example that, that you gave, the example wording in there, um, I'm certainly fine by including that, right? Um, other board members, see what George is suggesting there? So. So that which is underlined in the comment would follow the non-residential solar energy producing facility.
Yeah, I think that's actually missed, uh, my, when I commented, I think I misplaced that, I think it really goes to A, Anthony was asking for.
Oh, should it be, okay, so where ends the paragraph above?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
I mislocated my comment.
No problem, so where it ends, that sentence ends, um, is submitted as listed in the permit fee schedule established by the board of select persons, oh wait. So, so where appropriate to include that language, which is the comment that George suggested about the escrow account. So, and if required by the planning board and escrow account, et cetera, so if that could be fit in on paragraph A above, cost of such a shis-, uh, the cost of such assistance shall be borne by the applicant according to the terms of an escrow account set up at the time of the application is submitted, as listed in the permit fee schedule established by the board of select persons.
I mean, you know, the language that Anthony put there is fine, too.
Both deal with fees.
Yeah.
What's that?
I said they both deal with the fee.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same subject, it's.
Yeah.
It, it's a minor point. I don't know how many other people commented on prior stuff, maybe we, we should just leave those comments for addressing later.
Okay.
As we forward ahead.
Yeah.
Sort of like the way we approach the subdivision ordinance.
Right, right, I, I think so. So, wait, am I mistaken that, um, other com- or any other comments that we would find on page five, six, seven, eight? Uh, in the copy that I have, there, there are no more comments, are there any additional?
I, I think that's because when Anthony was just asking for us to comment on what we had edited previously.
Oh, previously, okay, so since that time, we have some comments then.
Yeah, because we haven't even discussed.
Right, right, okay, so let's go through it then. So following that one, we wanted to see then, i- if the operator will be leasing the land, the copy of the agreement, that. So any comments there on C?
I actually thought that was redundant with what's already in the main body of the ordinance that requires. Title right in.
Interest, yeah, it seems, to me, it seems duplicative.
Like that could be eliminated.
Um, so we, is it fair to say, uh, please, uh, eliminate paragraph C here? Duplicative? Duplicative? If so, it's being recorded, so we catch that, then.
And the, you know, in the main body of the ordinance, you may recall too that. Requires that. If, if it's gonna be a lease, a lease of land, that it has to be at least ten years in length. So this doesn't spell that out.
So therefore, even more reason to not include it. Then moving on to D, a description of the energy to be produced and to whom it will be sold. Any comments on that? Just keep as is? Okay, keeping it as, I guess.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. Hearing no arguments. E, a copy of the agreement. And schematic details of the connection arrangement with the transmission facility. Clearly indicating which party is responsible for various requirements and how they will be operated and maintained. Any comments on that? Hearing none, we'll move along. F, a description of the panels to be installed, including make and model and associated major facility components. Any comments on that?
Curious. If making models relevant or important.
I, I will say that it is just because. It's not out of here, where is manufacturer, the panels? And something happens on the road or something is called or anything like that. Or something happened that they're delishing some kind of inappropriate substance into the ground will be able to. Chase that down somehow.
Sort of track it back by knowledge of making.
They make a model and actually even where they make a model can be the same or something that is manufactured in China or something that's manufactured in Russia. Or something that is manufactured in the United States, depending where the plants are.
So you're in favor of keeping making model?
I am in favor of that and actually adding in which country it was produced.
Oh. Okay.
I don't know if we have the same making model.
I think you can.
Would you? I mean.
I don't know.
I just think things in general and you, you know, you don't see a Sony XR television and a. Same television made by non-Chinese.
I don't know. I, I guess I probably, I'm, I'm thinking about things that are not that expensive. You take shoes. Shoes were done right here by Dexter. They can move down to Puerto Rico and then they've been doing Malaysia and.
They have a tag on it, so it'd be US.
That we might take it. I'm, I might not have, we won't have, it's up to the work to decide that.
Yeah, I, I have a general comment. I'd like to see a provision that would allow changes to something like make and model. To be approved without going back to square one. Making model of panels in the project I proposed has changed. You know, it's a competitive, very competitive market. I'm trying to buy American panels. With a company called First Solar, which is the only major manufacturer of solar panels in the United States. But I, you know, I, I can foresee how changes like that might take place. And so what I'm suggesting is some kind of provision that would allow the board to. Before construction starts to, I, I think you already have something like this to review. Okay, there's been some changes made. Here's what they are. You know, discuss it. If you don't find it to be a problem, great. But, you know, I. I'd like to see something like that. And, and that should apply to all these very detailed provisions, which frankly, I regard as. Totally within what any other industry is required to do at this point, manufacturing. You don't go into a manufacturing facility and ask them what they can model machines they're putting in.
Right.
It's just a comment if we did keep it, certainly wouldn't require the project to go back. Start over, so it's a little bit pretty simple. I, I don't have too many thoughts one way or another. It could be amended fairly easily.
Yeah, it could be a letter. Letter amendment to the original approval. That's all that.
Sure.
If, if we keep this, I, I still question what business is, or how does it benefit the town to know what the make and model is?
From my perspective.
I understand the benefit to the owner for warranty purposes and, and issues of that nature. How's that help the interests of the town in Belgrade?
From, from my perspective, if something were to come before the board, I wouldn't be making a critical decision. On the merits of the application based on the make and model. Myself. I can understand how from a business model perspective, that the applicant would want to know so that they could backtrack in case there should be something going on. Should there be, I don't know, warranties, better opportunities, whatever the case may be, choices, preferences, whatever. But from the merits of the application that's going to afford the town, I'm, I'm not. I, I'm, I'm feeling hard pressed to understand why I would care about the mega model.
Kind of like telling the guy who's putting the, Mr. Randall, that you need to know where to find loads of Home Depot.
Yeah.
Are we striking the models?
Well, I, I think what we're, we're talking about and not to diminish.
My concern will be, well, we're here about land use. Okay. Whatever the developer chooses is to their fit. It's not a problem. But let's say down the road, something breaks loose with the fact that. They discover something wrong with his panels and have been delching the light in our land for this long. How, how from the town side? We can provide defense to the landowner or something like that. I mean, the, the, the developers don't like, oh, by the way, the panels I put in, they're no good. You know, they're not gonna, gonna say that, but if this breaks in the news or something like that, how, how the town can send itself? How the town and the rest of the town that leased the land can defend themselves in, in knowing all that or making sure that they. Those, those panels were not done. The ones that are in problems. Maybe it's, it's relevant, but. I don't know. It's, we don't know what's gonna happen in ten, fifteen years with any of this. Maybe.
I just want to make it clear. I don't have a problem stating what the make and model of the panels is, but I would like the ability to easily. Make changes if that's.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt about that. Sure.
That applies to a lot of these very detailed things.
That, that would be governed by actually the existing amendment divisions already in the ordinance.
Yeah, right.
So for something minor like this, would be just a matter of a letter rather than a full board reaplication. Versus if you were gonna add another fifteen acres or something.
Right. Different, right. So do we, do we want to include make and model language in here? Do we want to strike or does it matter?
Let's say we keep it. It's easy to change. We could actually add the words updated upon construction.
That's fine, too.
Yeah.
It's not major issue.
Not a major one. Okay, great.
Just so we have a record of it.
Yep, okay, I can see that point for sure. And, and maybe that would address some of the concerns you had, so. So if that's okay, we'll keep it and then keep bearing in mind your point about how to maybe modify if we need to.
Updated upon construction.
Yep.
Changed.
Excuse me, is there an opportunity? I mean, I think what the ordinance says is that prior to construction. The developer is supposed to submit a final one construction detail. Is that correct about that?
I know.
Well, because we approve the title, right?
Yeah, what we approve is, is considered final. And as I mentioned, but if things change, whatever, for whatever reasons and however they may change. The ordinance provides for submitting an amendment. The, the amendment depends on the degree of the change.
Yeah.
So there is a method to, to propose.
Because like your project and all projects that come here currently, they're approved with a. Standard condition of approval that in essence says what you applied for is what you got approval for and nothing more, nothing less.
Okay.
And that is the, the approach we've been trying to be, be very consistent.
Yeah, and I can see why you do that. Unfortunately, with these projects, the timelines get so stretched.
Yeah.
Yeah. It makes it more difficult to.
Yeah.
Not make changes over time. By construction, but maybe after the permit is placed.
Yeah, that is, that is a, that is a good point.
I mean. An alternative approach would be to have some of these rather than in the original application provided. At, at, in advance of the start of construction.
A part of this says, says a description of panels. To be installed.
Yeah, no, we do. We, yeah, we do. I mean, that kind of goes hand in hand with height.
So we're, we're keeping, including make and model?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
After going around the barn.
And Craig, do you want to include that language right now?
If you guys want to, but it sounds like it's pretty easy to. Change it.
Yeah.
It's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If it's okay, we'll move on.
Yeah, I, I just would like to make one last point. It's, it's a lot of money riding on this, okay? And by the time we get ready to construct it. We've already committed a lot of money.
Right.
Buy equipment. So any, you know, any. Small changes that could, you know, trigger a, a new review are gonna be kind of risky for the developer. And the banks aren't gonna like that kind of stuff. So I just would, you know, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with telling you what the make and model is as long as I can change it later on.
Definitely can do that.
Yeah, the method to, to indicate any changes is, is provided. So I, I think as stated, a letter. Would be adequate in many cases, I, I, you know. I believe that would be in fairly straightforward and timely way to, to make an amendment. I, I hear your concern though, because these, these, this is drawn on for a long time. Yeah. And it's, it's unique to this industry, I think, as compared to other commercial activities, which are not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've never encountered anything of this.
This is.
Timeline, implementation timeline.
Right. We're talking years, right?
Yeah.
In another case, where we approve commercial developments, you have a year to get significant progress made or you have to come back.
I, I'm aware of that.
So, so, right, yeah, yeah, I know. But, but you can see how it's different when we're trying to fit language that can address all things. As best we can. And then we have specific things like with solar.
Well, and we had previously discussed that we would revisit the, that timeline.
Timeline, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's just a different way of thinking for us all. Of course. Uh, I think where we were next was to go to the new G, which is a, a construction plan and timeline identifying known contractors. Site control and anticipated online date.
I, I don't, you know, the, the ordinance already requires a, a, a. Pretty detailed engineering plan or construction plan. But it doesn't require for other projects of smaller scope, a timeline and the, the other information. So I, I would suggest that we delete the words plan and, and. So that it just reads a construction timeline identifying known contractors, site control and anticipated online.
Gotcha. I see that we were, yeah.
That we're not stumbling.
Yep, okay.
We're in the same ground.
Yeah, so we already get plans. We're gonna through different part of them.
Right. New item H, a full official, official, I'm sorry, land survey of the proposed site. Must include any rights of way and easements on the property and be sealed and or stamped by a main licensed professional surveyor. Any comments? Moving on, I, an operations and maintenance plan, including site control and the project, I'm sorry, and the projected operating life of the facility. Any other comments? J, an emergency management plan for all anticipated hazards. I think it's standard. So, any comments? Hearing none. K, proof of financial capacity to construct and operate the proposed, well, it says USSF, but we're changing that to. The wind.
Non-residential.
Yeah, thank you. Non-res solar facility, I think, or some. Any other comments besides the, the, the change from the acronym?
Not on that, but. Question in terms of how we proceed. So in, in the memo that I wrote that was in the board packet, I had suggested one, two, three, four, five, six additional application items. And I thought it might make sense to talk about that when we get into the meat of the, of the visual impact assessment. Because they're kind of routine stuff. But that is, I think, lacking in what the KV cog model ordinance.
Let's get into those if we could. And so that would be right after K, so because then the next thing is the visual impact stuff, so.
Yeah, that's pretty neat.
And I had your, your memo.
Yeah, so it'd be on page two of the memo, of my memo, paragraph two, additional submissions.
Yes, gotcha. One, oh, two As, that's why we have six, because E is the fifth letter, right? But we have six.
Well, obviously, I think we can manage to renumber those.
Yes, we can.
And these all came from, you know, the other various model ordinances or. Massachusetts ordinances.
Okay.
So the first would be the name and contact, information of the solar system installer. The contact information, license number of the supervisor, main license electrician.
Makes good sense.
You know.
Standards. Yeah.
Stuff. Apparently I decided that we needed two As.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And, and would be not put my name on it.
So, so pardon me, George. So did you get to that page? So it was.
Is, is in, is a, if you look in the bottom, is, is, is a piece of the document that says refers to pages number two of eight. You keep going, keep going, look just in the bottom. It's right, it's after.
In the packet.
Yeah.
It's after the first new stuff. Keep going, look at the bottom, it says page such and such of eight. After that.
Yeah, it, it all got shuffled somehow in the packet. Well, since Anthony isn't here, we obviously.
Yeah, clearly.
I mean, that's a.
So.
Okay, so.
George was talking about page two.
Got it, okay. Okay. So we're all, we're all together on the same spot. And so the first letter A, this is basic stuff, right? Name and contact info for that. We're all good. So the suggestion is to include this, right, for, for submission requirements that would follow item K. item K, right? So this will be following that. So I'm saying it for the record.
Again, these are supposed to be supplemental. Versus replacements.
Okay. So yes, I think we're good on that one. Next up, George.
So A number two would be written, a written certification by the installer that all the electrical components be installed according to the national electric code.
Makes good sense. Okay.
And this stuff is basically quality assurance stuff.
Yeah.
Then B would be to provide a one or three line electrical diagram detailing the electrical components, installation and electrical interconnections to the Belgrade fire chief.
You happen to know, just informing me what a one or three line thing is, is it? I know you probably got it out of some document, but.
Yeah.
I just wonder.
I used to know, I can't remember now. I'm sorry, I I can't. The 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 intent though is to so that the fire department is responding to a fire or some other kind of incident there, know how to do it safely without electrocuting themselves.
Thanks. Makes good sense. I think is a fire responder safety measure was first.
You know the difference.
Well, the one line diagram just shows the layout of the electrical equipment, what's connected to what. I imagine the three line diagram shows each phase of the three phases. Uh, electrical wire. So it would be quite a bit more detailed. I don't know how. See, I don't know how common it is to have a three line diagram like that, but I'm not concerned because it says one or three.
Right. So the intent is the same. It's so that the fire chief and the fire department know what's there.
So that sounds very reasonable. Next. Item C.
Yeah, stream crossing detailed design plans. There's nothing required in the KB cog or in the current ordinance for and so to talking larger scope. Scale, potentially larger scale projects that may have one portion here, cross the stream, another portion there. Or or internal road systems that cross the stream, it seems like need to be assured that that's going to be designed. Correctly.
Good. D.
And then so KB cog didn't include anything about agricultural soils identification, probably because uh, that was, those guidelines were probably approved after they did that model, but so this is just the identification of the soils consistent with state state policies. Can't protect important agricultural soils if you don't know if you have them.
Right. Very good.
And and and, you know, obviously it incorporates by reference the the state guidelines.
Yep. Excellent. That we have the guidelines change, we're just referencing the guidelines. The details change in the guidelines, we're just referencing the guidelines.
Well, this, you know, I have the, I have the current date there rather than or as revised.
Could be put in or as revised? You know, thanks, that'd be good.
If we can do it. Or not what anything we want.
Right. Well, but we've we've so far tried to be as efficient with the references as possible.
I mean, my only intent with this was to help move the ball forward.
Right.
Point out what I think are some of the uh, weaknesses in the KB cog model.
Yeah, anything we can do to strengthen it, then we're getting specific, you know, information where possible.
I certainly don't expect that we're will adopt these in mass or anything like that, just to help the conversation.
And last one.
Just the, you know, mainland fish and wildlife, beginning with habitat mapping.
Yep.
That they provide that.
Yep.
And you put the fifteen hundred feet, that was to get a more general thing versus the others that comes page later. Thirteen hundred and twenty.
Right, and that's a new guideline for mainland fish and wildlife, the thirteen hundred.
And, you know.
Fifteen hundred or thirteen?
Fifteen. I mean, thirteen hundred is the new.
Just to be.
Yeah, so you get a sense of what's actually in the area.
So Rich, I saw that number. I'm like, how did they get that number? And it dawned on me, it was a quarter of a mile. But like, so some somewhere, someone said, well, it can't be hundred, two hundred, three hundred feet. And then somehow they landed on, wow, it's gotta be a quarter of a mile. Then just put in the units of feet. It made no sense to me when I was reading that.
Yeah.
You know, until.
Versus thirteen hundred and twenty-two.
Right. But anyway, I I noticed that straight away when I was reading through this.
With you in mind, Peter, that's why I rounded it up fifteen hundred feet.
I don't know whether fishing change their guidelines on the eagle habitat distance or not, but I know earlier, maybe the same. It's just, it was quite a distance.
Yeah.
But, you know, you go around and see where all these eagles are, they, they're not always that distance or whatever and they fry, you know.
Yeah.
I almost think they might apply some of those.
While they're taking up the species list graphic, eagles.
Yeah.
Yep.
So anyway, those were my suggestions for additional application submission requirements.
Yeah, I have no problem adding those in, you know, does anybody else? Include them. So they thought, if we were to agree to add those in, they would follow item K and be before visual impact assessment. Are we good with that? Yeah, great, let's do it. So does that then lead us to visual impact assessment stuff? Think so. Yeah, and I'm, I'm, yeah, I would be in favor of not.
No subtle suggestion.
It's been a long day already.
Well, that would also, another benefit of that would be we could people kind of think a little bit about what we heard earlier today too. Cause there there were some ideas that they put forward that I hadn't
Yeah.
Thought of, considered or knew about.
Yeah, there was some good, there was same for me. I also had some additional thoughts about what I was expecting to see in a visual impact analysis and the ability to represent that information. Cause what I was thinking about, and Craig, this is, this is what we talked about la- last time, was like, when you're in the lake somewhere, presumably on the Belgrade side of whatever line it is we're talking about, looking back at a shore. Could we have a visualization of what it would look like up on hillside or some sort of.
I'm gonna have to get out in a boat, take those pictures.
Boat, maybe use a drone. I don't know how, collect the data however they can so you can represent it in a community like ours, so you can visualize what it might be like to the best of the ability of the technology. But that's what I was thinking about. When I was thinking about the visual impact assessment, because like with that application up here on the hill, you know. It's one thing to say, well, from the road, you may or may not see it, but you know, think about it from down down there, what it might be like. And people might have other opinions, so. Anyway, it was just, that was some of the stuff I was thinking about.
One of the things I thought of when he was talking about local things. Might be one that you throw out and see a area. Be a consequence for people if it turned into this.
When when he was talking about that too, you know, I don't want to delay everybody, but I was thinking about the importance of having an inventory. And clearly, I don't have an inventory. We don't have an inventory as a group to use right now. But I was kind of going through my head and thinking like when people take pictures of Belgrade, where do they take pictures? Cause that's kind of, that's kind of indicative.
It's not a bad way to frame the question.
Right? I mean, that's how, it it's a way, not the only way, but it's a way where people say, wow, this is, I like this, this is a good scene, you know. So they do.
Well, I can't tell you how many pictures Becky has of even mine, mine is old fields, or for that matter, Jack Sutton's fields.
Precisely, right? Or or maybe by the golf course, if you're up on there, I mean, there are a lot of people that take images from up there, like overlooking.
And that brings us to what he raised, you know, are we gonna do just publicly accessible?
Oh, gee.
Or are we gonna do private property too? So that's something else to think about.
There's some stuff to wrestle with there. I I I know when he listed off the.
Cause that's a members only kind of thing.
Right.
Although they're kind of generous about letting people go up there, but. Yeah, yeah, so that's gonna be, we need to think about that.
We do. So not to debate it tonight, I was just letting you know how I was thinking about.
Well, and and given the two legal opinions that we got, well, one, one is recommendation really as much as a legal opinion. The other was a legal opinion from the town attorney that we can only consider which within the boundaries of the town, legal boundaries of the town of Belgrade, which I think is unfortunate, but uh, that's just the way, you know, I guess that's the limitation of municipal government.
Right.
That's why we're not the DEP.
Right, right, exactly.
And and in the first page and elsewhere were dealt with suggested some um, you, you know, places that are important visual resources, those that'll have to be scaled back because like mostly included things outside the town of Belgrade.
Yeah.
But, you know, I didn't think they included something like, you know, the minded hill.
Yes. Yeah.
So.
I know, it's it's an interesting predicament. Now, one more thing. We are limited based on the opinions that we we received from the town's attorney, talking about limited to the municipality that we that we're in, which makes sense in a lot of ways, right? But it doesn't mean that we, that there couldn't be cooperation between adjacent communities.
Well, Rome just implemented a moratorium to give themselves time, so maybe you know, will benefit from whatever they do, if they do a good job, and they would certainly benefit from what you know, we do and.
I'd like to think.
But the the problem is, you know, if I mean, there may be a facility that's not seen, it cannot be seen, say, from the Belgrade portion of Great Pond. But it's seen from the Rome shore or maybe even more likely can be seen, uh, not seen from the Belgrade portion of, uh, well, really the surrounding area at all, including the the lake, because you know, if you got a slope like this and you're down here, close to that, like edge of that slope. The angle isn't correct, right? So, uh, but if you're on Mount Phillips, you'll see it like you know.
All of it.
Yeah, so. I don't know.
Yeah.
Mount Philip Francis Mount.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. That's, I mean, that's why I listed those places.
Yep.
But it goes both ways. It does goes both ways, because we're talking about our stuff that we, we're gonna allow in our town. But let's say that Rome allows stuff in their town that we can see in our side.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Right. They can't do anything about that either.
And and nor nor can we about that. My only suggestion might be to try to be as communicative as possible.
I mean, the only thing you can hope for is if it's large enough and it falls under DEP jurisdiction that they'll mitigate that impact. But, you know, they're not gonna approach it the same way we might.
Right.
Or with the same sensitivities. I mean, it's like Craig's question earlier uh, about, you know, the fact that none of the Belgrade lakes are considered a lake of significant statewide importance. Well, fine, I understand that, you know, maybe Moosehead's a hell of a lot more important on a statewide basis. But, uh, you know, in terms of a region here, this part of Maine, these lakes are very important to Belgrade, Rome, all the, the re, the, the, you know, all the towns in the watershed.
Yes, exactly. Sydney, Oakland, Belgrade, all of it.
It is interesting that Oakland doesn't have word one about visual impact in it.
Yeah.
Their ordinance.
Maybe they will after we get them.
Maybe.
Yeah. You know, the guy that.
Oakland?
Yeah.
I know the CEO.
All right. Well, hey, um, we do have more business to attend to. Would it be okay that we go on to the reviewing the minutes and then?
The only thing I would mention, and and maybe this is a note for you as much as anything, Richard, is that so in the next board packet, when we have, you know, the KB cog and whatever changes are made to it, that it would be good if my memo and the and this drawing go hand in hand with that so that we can do what we did tonight where we look at KB cog and then we can look at we can also discuss it at the same.
Since he's not here, I'll bring up Anthony. Little faux pas there where you got your stuff.
No big deal.
No, I get what you're saying. You wouldn't agree with me. Yeah. It'd be much easier though.
Goodness, everybody has the minutes.
George, can I keep this copy?
Yeah, yeah, no, that was, I just read that out. Out of my packet, which.
Of course. Thank you for your time. I get, yeah, after we get done, I gotta comment. Just came to light, so. Has nothing to do with this, but.
Actually, I have a question.
You know, said, are there any edits or recommendations to revise the minutes from May, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two? Anything? I I was thinking the same thing. Okay. Craig, nothing? So if no, no suggestions for edits. So if no, no suggestions for edits, I would entertain a motion to accept.
I'll place a motion to adjut the minutes of uh, April minimum.
March seventeen. Thank you. A motion's been made. Do you have a second? And seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor, Craig, yes, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Rich, yes, I am two in favor, five in favor and not opposed. Anything else to discuss?
No.
I would entertain a motion to adjut.
I'd like some motion to adjut.
I have a, I have a question.
A business question?
Yeah, the business question.
Okay, yeah.
I I assumed yours was business, but no.
Mine's not.
So. The voters approved um, the subdivision ordinance.
He did.
So I was wondering if we could get copies of, clean copies of the final ordinance.
Yep.
For our reference, and in my case, I don't know who else, well, Rich has a three ring binder. We, they could be punched for a three ring binder.
And that I I'm confident we can do that. So um, then. Richard, would you mind working with the correct staff to make sure we get adequate copies?
Well, copies of the updated or the latest, so to speak.
By the voters, yeah.
With, um, if you please, uh, holes punched in it as we go into three ring binders.
Oh, my gosh.
I know.
Please, please.
So everybody would like a copy of the subdivision ordinance?
Yep.
Imagine what to modify the application.
Well, yeah, that was the other thing, not to discuss it, but we just need to be cognizant of the fact that we. I don't know when we're gonna find the time, but we need to submit the application, the checklist and. And we gotta develop findings of that and law.
Yeah, indeed, we do.
But that's us to me.
Anything else that's business related? I'd entertain a motion to adjut.
I'm making a motion to adjut.
Second, all those in favor, Craig? Sarah?
Yes.
George, Rich, you can't, I am a favor too. Thank you, we're we're adjourned, everybody. Thanks very much for your time. So my questions for the audience, I'm gonna stop the.